And now you're ready to go.
All right, thank you Vanessa. It's 6:31 by way of context. The Board of Selectmen convened tonight at 6:00 PM, immediately went into executive session and are now returning to open session. The meeting's been called to order, the governor's prologue has been read, and we are ready for public comment. And I did not see any hands raised. So next up, we have scheduled appointments. We have hopefully a number of volunteer interviews. The Capital Planning Committee apparently was correct in its assessment that engineers look for notices in the paper and respond to them. And so they got at least three responses, the three that we have scheduled for volunteer interviews this evening. And I see that Mr., and I'm going to apologize in advance, Mr. Hinterneter is first on our list and it also appears that he is in our attendee queue. So if we can bring him over. Sir, you're muted. There you go.
Okay, great, thanks.
How badly did I mess up your name?
I think you said it right. It's phonetical. It's Hinterneder.
Okay, great. Excellent. Well, welcome and thank you. And I'm assuming that usually I would start with Mr. Shea. He's the engineer on the Board of Selectmen. I know you guys have secret handshakes and all sorts of stuff like that. But appreciate your interest. And the way these work is, is there's five of us on the board and we'll go around quickly after I give you the opportunity to explain why you're interested and maybe a little bit about yourself that puts some flesh on the information you put on your volunteer form. Then we'll have a quick chat and we'll go from there. Fair enough?
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right, well, it's, the floor is yours.
So I, you know, I saw the notice. I don't remember exactly where I saw it. I think it was in an email format, but when I saw it, you know, it struck some interest here. I do, you know, I have done a lot of volunteer opportunities. I have not done a lot inside of the town for, you know, opportunities here. For a while, I'd served on the Board of Trustees for the Southborough Open Land Foundation. And I said I'm a trustee of the Brickneck Hill Cow Fund while we had our Belted Galloways grazing freely. And though, you know, that, you know, Cow Fund completed and so that doesn't exist anymore. And I also spend my time, you know, volunteer wise at, I'm on the Board of Directors for Zoo New England, which manages both the Franklin Park Zoo and the Stone Zoo. So, you know, that's my passion is, is, well, my profession is inside of engineering and construction. You know, I'm a licensed geotechnical or geospatial engineer in this state and, you know, I had my license in six other states. And I came to Southborough in, I was just thinking about this, February of 1997 to start working for a company called Schnabel Foundation Company. And we were at, started at 200 Turnpike Road, right, you know, at the corner of Route 9 and 85 there, one of the hidden properties. And, you know, so again, I've spent my time working for a construction company. So I've got a lot of the construction aspect of things. But I also am, you know, a licensed engineer. I've done a lot of design work. And, you know, going into the Board of Directors for the zoo, you know, I realized that, that my specialty of, you know, the construction could actually serve very well for that on their, on their facilities and grounds and, you know, all of the projects. That I just, I just realized I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be talking about the projects that we have, you know, like up and coming anyways, you know, like we have stuff that's happening, some renovation stuff, some, some new projects, there's stuff on the, you know, design fronts that are, you know, that are gonna be coming out. And then there's more that are, you know, you know, talked about. So, you know, I have been a licensed engineer for, I think, maybe 15 years, something like that. When I came out to work for the company Schnabel, it was really the first professional work I did, you know, after I got my graduate degrees. And until about, I want to say three years ago, the, you know, my office was in Southborough. It moved from 200 to 206, which actually went from 200 to 116 Middle Road, which then got renamed 206 Turnpike. But so that, until then, I worked there and that company decided to pull out of the Northeast. They're a nationwide company. And so, you know, now what I do, I work for a construction company that's based in Stoughton, Mass. And I'm the president of the company. And so we, we do a lot of large commercial projects in Boston, Cambridge, Somerville type areas, doing slurry walls, which are the very large foundations that are put in from existing grade, but can put in three, four, five, eight levels of underground parking before the building actually is constructed. And then the building can be built from there up. And, and, you know, so it's a very specialized niche inside of the, you know, construction world. And so, you know, I'm, I'm always interested in where I can make a contribution. And so, you know, in my discussion, you know, with the folks on, you know, that are, or I reached out to the, to the chair, you know, having that discussion about like what's, kind of what's on the docket. I listened to one of the, you know, one or two of the meetings and, and, you know, heard of stuff that was upcoming. And I said, I can make a contribution here in our town. And, you know, I've actually worked here longer than I've lived here. I, I moved here in 2003. So, you know, it took me those six years of working in Southborough to figure out how the heck I could afford to move into Southborough. But, you know, I wouldn't have it any other way. It's, you know, it's my home now. I originally came from New York and, and, you know, absolutely adore this town, so.
All right, well, great, great framework for being interested in volunteering. I'll start with you, Ms. Brosham. Questions or comments for Mr. Hinterneter?
I'm just gonna say Steve if it's okay.
That's fine.
Okay, I'm just not gonna go there. First, I want to just thank you for volunteering, for stepping up. You know, the Capital Committee is a fairly new committee that the Board of Selectmen created and they have huge responsibilities on them. You had actually answered the two questions that I had was had you attended or watched any of the meetings? And then how you heard about the opportunity as well? So I thank you for stepping forward. Based on, I know you just said that you had spoken to the chair. Is there anything in particular that you may have watched or seen the committee discuss that may have been of a specific interest to you?
No, actually, no. I mean, you know, there were, there were things that were interesting, right? So I learned some stuff, right? Because I don't really know, I don't really pay attention to how you all spend the money, right? Like, or you spend the money, right, as a town? And so when, like, I think one of the ones was about, you know, fire, you know, the fire chief was there and having a discussion about, you know, the water truck and size of a water truck, 500, 1,000, 2,000 gallons. And so, you know, I was like, right, very logical thought process in that. And we have to look at like, you know, the, I wouldn't say the cost per gallon, but like, what's the cost per usage? Like, what's the reason? How often will we need it and that? So, you know, there's like interesting stuff there. Nothing to do with, you know, like pieces of what I've done in the past. So, you know, and, and then I also know there's discussion about, you know, future talk about like Woodward School and, and, you know, whatever, like whatever there is there, repurposing or keeping or not, like any of that. You know, and I, and I've also been, you know, watching stuff like when we, when we watched the, the new construction happen for the police and the fire stations, right? And just like watching the history of it, I get, you know, I get very interested on, on what we're doing. And, and when I saw that happen, it's like, I don't know how else to be polite about it, but it was like, yay, we're not in the 1970s anymore, or whatever the heck, you know, the look is, right? And, and it was like, great, we're, you know, we're a town that actually figured it out. We figured out how to get the resources that were right. Put, put those in place. And by the way, my understanding is that somehow miraculously we came in under budget. And I'm like, that's even better. Because it's almost unheard of, right, in today's world? To actually have, you know, projects coming in under budget. So, you know, it's
Right. Thank you.
Kudos to whoever had anything to do with that.
Well, thank you. And just one, one final quick question. Have you ever, I think you kind of answered this, but I'll ask it again. Have you, is this would be your first time if you were selected serving on a committee in, for the town of Southborough?
I, I think, I think that's correct. You, I've never, I've never been appointed by the, by you folks for anything. Is that how it would always work? Because again, like Southborough Open Land Foundation is a private or public F01 C3, right?
Yeah.
So, yes, yes, I'm sorry. I have not served.
Okay, great. That's it. Thank you for stepping forward. And Marty, if I could just make one suggestion, I know that Mr. Malinowski is out there in the audience. I don't know if he may or may not have a question or something that he might wants to add to this discussion. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Good suggestion. Jason, you are out there. After we go around, if you have anything you want to weigh in on, on any of the three gentlemen we're talking to tonight, just raise your hand and we'll get to you. But for now, we're going to Chelsea Malinowski.
Hi, Steve. Thanks for coming and thank you for your interest in this committee. And as Marty had stated, this, or Lisa, this was a committee that's been reinvigorated within the last year. And I think this board has been very supportive of, of that committee. And I think they've done a lot of great work to get to this point. So my question for you is, after you kind of have followed some of the meetings and your example on the tanker was a good one on something that I think you can, you could learn from, but is your, what is your most, where, where would you add the most value? Would it be in relation to looking at buildings or other assets of the town?
So I mean, from a, like a, like a background standpoint, you know, the construction, everything I've ever done is underground. My specialty is everything on the ground. So, you know, if there's stuff involved with anything, you know, whether it's, whether it's, I don't, you know, again, whether it's utility work, something that we're up to, you know, chasing, whether there's buildings and then, you know, the, I have to be honest, I think building a building, when you get above ground is really easy. It's the challenging stuff is digging inside of the stuff we don't know. So, but I think you asked me where I think I'd make the biggest contribution. And I think I would say that the biggest contribution is not necessarily just inside of like, you know, engineering and construction side. But it's, it's more of my ability to actually not just be content with like the status quo answer. You know, I would, I would rather just ask, you know, like actually inquire, like what the, you know, like why we would want to do something, what could we actually gain out of it? Because the reality is, is that if Southborough does something which, you know, quite frankly, brings, brings down the town, right, like that would kind of be pointless. So, you know, I don't want to see something that's put up that then goes, ugh, you know? And, and, you know, I also don't want to take something down, which people go like, oh my God, that's like one of the reasons I moved here. You know, and, and, and I'd say that's, you know, that's what was one of the most gut wrenching things for me personally, when the Brickneck Hill Cow Fund had to dissolve, was when I moved here, I, my property abuts that conservation land. And then one of the, the things that brought me here was I wanted to be in here with those cows. It was, it was something that I've never seen before, you know, so unique that they were grazing. So, you know, it's, it's, again, yeah, I think that probably answers my
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shea.
Well, thank, so Steve, I think the one thing that we could have done better with the public safety building, that you mentioned it, if we just had a slurry wall foundation for that, for that building, I know it could have been a much better enhancement.
Yeah, you could. Our rock is too high here.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian, I'm kind of wondering now why you guys didn't put four or five, you know, floors of parking underneath. Come on.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And to your point about buildings being easier, if we didn't have to file subbid laws, I, I might agree with you more on that. In any case.
I get that, too.
That's a complicating factor. So I'm, as Marty had mentioned, I'm an engineer in the group and I, it didn't really click until now. But I know that our, some of the projects that we've designed have utilized East Coast slurry. I don't think there's anything that I'm working on currently where there is an overlap. But I know they have been in the past. So from that
And what company are you with?
Currently StanTech, previously. So StanTech had acquired FST and I was with FST forever. And I think you folks had done the, for the MWRA, that North Dorchester Bay Pump Station.
It's quite possible, again, my experience with these, with the East Coast slurry has been about little over, almost nearly three years, two and a half, three years.
Yeah.
So, you know, my, my specialty before that was doing all these other very unique excavation support systems and unique foundations that were exactly not slurry walls, which is kind of funny.
Yep, interesting. Okay. So I think, you know, what you've been saying is great. I don't have additional questions of really the ones that I wanted to hit, touch upon have been hit on already. And I think it'd be a great addition to the group. I think that there's three really, really strong candidates for this. I think we have a tough, tough decision ahead of us tonight. Thanks, Marty.
Sure. Like I said, secret handshakes with you guys. Right, Mr. Divers.
Thank you. Steve, thanks for applying for the position. Great to see people step up to volunteer. Looks like you've got great technical expertise. I can't resist quipping that with your specialty, maybe you should consider the cemetery committee in terms of underground focus. If we had one, we don't. Sorry, Marty, couldn't resist. The question I have, I guess, is, is you touched on the fact that there's value in this position in terms of having some context for what's going on around town. Have you been a regular attendee at town meeting, for example? So you've followed the budget pressures that we've experienced over the past five, 10 years here?
Yeah, the answer is yes and no. I don't think I went to the last one. I do remember going to the two before that. You know, like, I know when we, when we were having the discussions of whether to, you know, what, what to do with, you know, St. Mark's Golf Course? You know, and how to, you know, how that whole acquisition and that took multiple years of, you know, votes or not votes and budgeting and stuff. So, you know, I'm not a diligent goer, but I have, you know, gone for some of the meetings that were just hours and hours and, you know, get put in the overflow room instead of the regular room and go, oh man, I don't want to be there. Next time, I gotta get there early.
Very exciting to get there early and see the whole 12 hours worth. So that, I guess that was my main question in terms of sort of background context for this, because one of the issues that this committee wrestles with is how you think longer term, how you understand where we got, how we got to where we are in terms of some of the fiscal pressures as it interacts with capital, et cetera. And going forward, I think there's going to be, I hope, more collaboration with the schools. Are you, have you followed the school committee capital budgeting process at all?
No, I actually don't follow almost anything in the town as far as like, you know, who, who is dealing with what? I, you know, and this is, I don't mean to be ignorant about it, but I've just assumed that we, as Southborough people, have it handled. It never really occurred to me like, oh, there could be a need. You know, I, I spent, you know, I, I spent a lot of time, you know, with, again, on the, on the Board of Directors and then chairing, you know, a subcommittee on, on the building and grounds facility. And, you know, we've got master plans and developed them. And so I've been involved for, I think it's been eight years. And from where we were to where we are now and to where we think we're going, right? You know, I get the, I get the long-term planning aspect and realizing, you know, that some of them are lofty goals and, and, you know, trying to figure out, because it's, you know, like on that organization, it is sitting as a, as a Commonwealth-owned property in the center of a Boston-owned park, right? And, and then it's a 501(c)(3) managing stuff for the state, right? Like managing the properties and stuff. So it's like, there's a lot of complexity in what we can actually create and how we can do it. So, you know, I, I can get that piece, but no, I haven't been following, you know, very closely, really any of the, any of the topics.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question, then. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sam. And I don't see Mr. Malinowski's hand up. So I'm assuming that we've, we've successfully covered the ground that, that he'd be interested in hearing about. So one of the things, and Mr. Shea touched upon it. Again, we, we recreated, reinvigorated, whatever the right terminology is, the Capital Planning Committee. And it's a, it's a bit of a committee in, if it's not in flux yet, it's going to be in flux because we're wrestling with exactly what the composition is going to look like. Just because there are some town bylaws that, that restrict the, some of the, for instance, advisory committee people who are on the committee. And Mr. Shea, somebody, maybe a number of people also indicated, is yourself, we're talking to two other folks. We've got what appeared on paper and nothing in this conversation has disabused me of that notion that we have three very talented folks with engineering backgrounds who are interested in being involved in some town committees. And I think part of our discussion is going to be to figure out a way to have all you three involved, you know, in some way, shape or form. So, but give us that flexibility and we will appreciate your, your chatting with us tonight. And obviously, you're welcome to stick around and, and, you know, watch anything in the short term or longer term. But we're going to shift over and talk to, to a couple of the other folks now.
Yeah, thanks. I really appreciate it. And, you know, here's the thing, I'm, I'm interested in making a contribution. So whether it's this or whether it's something else, I, you know, I'm open to whatever. You know, I'm not trying to sell myself. I, you know, I have lots to do and I guarantee you I can make a difference in any aspect of it. It's just, you know, what it is that we as a town really want to make the, you know, the difference. And so, you know, it's, engineering background is great and my construction background is great. And, you know, my training for listening for, you know, what's, what's going on and not getting caught up in, you know, too much ruckus of the story about, you know, you know, like the, too, too much getting caught up in other people's opinions, right? So at the end, I very much thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And well, well said at the end there. So, so whether it's capital planning or something else, you're going to end up on a committee pretty soon. I think that's a safe bet.
Well, you all have my, you all have my contact and I live in your town, so.
All right. Take care, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Vanessa, next, I'm just going to go in the order we've, we've got, and I apologize that if folks tuned in either at 6:00 or 6:30. But next up was Mr. Reed. So Mr. Belniak, I apologize that we're going to get to you third. Unless, raise your hand real quick, Mr. Belniak, if, if for some reason going third would be a problem for you from a time standpoint. I know you've been on for a while. Nope? Okay, we're going to go with Mr. Reed then. And Mr. Reed, you are, you are muted. At some point, when you've, when, when you've unmuted, and I'm not sure if we're going to be able to see you on our screens. Whoops. There we go. I love it when technology works. I have nothing to do with it, but I'd love to see it work. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Healy. If I could just first check and make sure everyone can hear me okay.
Absolutely. Yeah. And please, Marty, Mr. Reed, as I call you Mr. Reed. Don't call me Mr. Healy. All right, I'll go with John. How's that?
That, that would suit just fine. Thank you.
Okay. I know you were, you were in the, the queue, so I think you heard some of the, 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 the prologue and what I said at the end. So I'm not going to repeat all of it. I'm just going to give you the opportunity, again, appreciate the information you provided. But maybe just before we, you know, go around our queue, and Chelsea, I'm going to start with you this time, just a quick, you know, description of, of, of your background and why you're, you reached out with an interest in capital planning?
Sure. So just in the interest of time, I did prepare a brief introduction and that might just help move it along right to the questions. At a high level, I owned my, I own my own consulting firm for over 13 years. I continue to own and invest in real estate and have worked for companies involved in various facets of construction engineering for over 25 years. On a personal level, I have lived in Southborough for over 10 years, first renting and later buying a home. And our children attend the, the Southborough Public School System. I previously served one term on the Public Safety Building Committee. Referring to a recent news article which highlighted some of the recent activities around capital planning for the current school buildings in Southborough. By way of example, my familiarity with those buildings gained as a parent. In addition to my construction engineering background could benefit such an initiative. What I can offer to this committee, it's 20 years of construction engineering experience in development and redevelopment of residential and commercial properties and energy infrastructure. Engineering expertise backed up by dual professional licensure in civil and structural engineering in Massachusetts. And lastly, experience in serving on and being retained by boards. Those are, those are various types of private and public boards, given expert testimony in front of regulatory and state bodies and preparing testimony in court for civil and structural matter. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that the Selectmen may have.
All right, nice little summary. Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. Thanks, John, and thank you for your interest in this committee as well. It sounds like your background fits well with what this committee is looking for. Can you elaborate on how up to speed you are with what the Capital Committee is working on right now?
I spent some time, and it was actually in following some limited interaction that I had with, I believe it's your husband, I'm not sure, just, you know, by, relate, some, some relationship perhaps.
Yes.
But it was, it was, it was upon that initial introduction, I, I did spend some time looking at what is essentially the, the mandate of the committee and understanding what is at hand. Since then, trying to keep a, a pulse on some of those initiatives, largely through the, through the local news. One that piqued my interest most recently is the, the initiative to look at the, the public schools and, and understand how that, how those schools will be addressed from a, from a capital planning perspective, amongst other considerations. That, that is essentially the, the essence of my involvement.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Brian?
Thanks, John. Thank you for throwing your hat in the ring for this. Appreciate it. It's good to see all the engineers very prepared for, for tonight. Just curious, have you had a chance, I know that you had coordinated with Jason on this, but have you had a chance to watch any of the committees' meetings or, you know, any, you know, get into, you know, either recordings of them or see them live, the meetings that they are having?
The short answer is no. In fact, in, in this, it becomes just a matter of, you know, clearing the schedule. I don't recall exactly what night that most recent meeting was, but there, you know, there was a conflict with my, I, I, between other activities and that I, that I participate in on that particular evening. And that's really the only event that I'm aware of since the advertising went out. And tonight is, is that single meeting, unfortunately, because of the conflict, I could, I could not listen in.
I guess, you know, in the form that you had filled out, you would indicate the Capital Planning Committee, you know, as Marty had noted, and I hope you had heard that, you know, we've got, you know, three strong candidates for this. If for some reason we do select one of the other people, are there other committees? Would you still look to be involved in the town, involved in some way? Because quite honestly, I think that all the people we're going to talk to tonight, I think they're going to be strong additions to a number of other committees that we do have.
I would consider it. I think perhaps with, with appreciating Mark, Mark Purples in the audience and having served the one term on the building committee, that's, that is my passion, quite frankly. And I shared this with Mr. Malinowski as part of the, the brief interaction. It was my wife who, she, she keeps a very close tab on the, the local news through some of these local websites and so forth. And she brought that to my attention because I think she, she knows And she brought that to my attention because I think she knows that's my passion. That's what I enjoy doing. I do it day in and day out. And so the short answer is if there's an opportunity and it's related to exactly really how that was advertised with the construction and engineering and perhaps with with some association to the planning aspects of that, I would certainly be interested. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, Sam, Mr. Styris.
Thanks. Thanks, John, for applying for the position. Great to find people who are interested in these jobs, which are really important for some of the longer term decisions that the town is making. Couple of quick questions. One is per your comment about the conflict with the last meeting, you're generally available during the evenings for Capital Plan Committee meetings, evenings or the first thing in the morning. I think there have been a couple of those along the way. Is that flexibility in your schedule?
I am. So I'm thinking about that one particular interest. It actually happens to be the fact that I serve on a board of trustees for for property in Worcester, Massachusetts, and it was scheduled that same exact night, but I happened to chair that board. So it becomes a mere matter of knowing that, you know, in essence, I have control and the ability to move around those dates. So that's an example of where, by and large, and I think I pointed this out in the in the submittal of my interest that I'm generally available most evenings. I'll just briefly share, Mark, you might recall this being what led to me not being able to serve any longer on the Public Safety Building Committee was, I went through a career change and I was, and it involved extensive travel. I was, I was living out of a suitcase and traveling very extensively five days a week. Since then, I've made a career change that is essentially the complete opposite. I'm home every day and not nearly that level of commitment that I was experiencing largely over the last five years.
Thanks. And second question, in terms of connection to town activities, finances, et cetera, have you been a pretty regular town meeting attendee? And so you've got some sense of context relative to where we've been budget wise over the last half dozen years or so?
Yes, sir.
Good. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brashia.
Great, thank you. Good evening, John. Thank you for coming tonight and thank you for stepping forward. I just have a couple of questions for you. You did say that you had served a term on the Public Safety Building Committee. That was a very successful committee for this town. It moved a lot of important things forward in getting the Public Safety Building done. So could you just share from that committee what you found your expertise in engineering and how it played a role in what you were able to bring to the committee in the meetings that you had attended?
So reflecting on it and appreciating marks in the room to be able to verify what I'm about to say is that being a part of any board involves consensus building and team building and so forth. And what I think I brought to the table was, particularly at that phase of the that initiative, was for instance, looking at various options. You know, I remember at the time I was looking at property down near the transfer station and looking at the potential reuse of that property. And I'll give just one example where we're looking at trying to reuse that property. As an engineer, I can look at the existing land and at least make a proposal that, well, could you make it work on the existing parcel? If we, if you know that's a constraint and there's just not the ability to purchase land that would allow for the construction of that facility, then that was some of the, what I tried to contribute to was, well, looking at the existing facility and you you lay out the footprint of a building, could you make it work if this was your only option? And then listening to the previous conversation is looking at the geotech conditions and, you know, there was the understanding that at the transfer station, there's all sorts of complications in that area with respect to the subsurface conditions. That's what, that's what an engineer brings to the conversation and the in the development of these, in the progress of these initiatives.
Great, thank you. And just one final question following up again on something you had said. So you had said that you had a conversation with Mr. Malinowski, who was the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. And based on your conversations, and I would assume he shared with you some of the things the committee is doing and whatnot. What are you most interested in jumping into and using your expertise based on the, what the committee is working on currently?
Yes, so just to be clear, Lisa, I didn't, actually didn't have any conversation with Mr. Malinowski. It was merely correspondence through email, and that was the limit of it. And I'll, you know, my view of that was I, you know, I looked at it as an opportunity in this advertising to to take a step back over the last few weeks and follow the, to do my own reading and to follow some of the recent news that's come to come to publication and let that be the, you know, let that be the basis of, you know, my understanding coming into this interview, you know, without, you know, with, I'll say, a limited understanding, but but very much focused on those credentials, on those credentials that the committee is seeking.
Great, thank you for the clarification. And again, thank you for stepping forward. You know, we appreciate returning people to step forward again and those new as well. So thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
All right, John, I'm going to let you go. I'm assuming you heard the little spiel I went through at the end. That the committee's in flux and we're trying to figure out exactly what to do with it, but we've got some decisions to make both in the short and medium term about that.
Understood. Happy to help in any way I can is, you know, again emphasizing that if it's within those, within that that boundary of engineering and construction, I'm happy to contribute.
All right, terrific. Nice.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Belniak, who sent me a little chat that he was fine going third. So Vanessa, if we can bring Alan Belniak over.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Hey, Alan, yes. Marty Healy, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
I'm good. So you've been, you've been in the audience, so you've got a little bit of a feel for the way we've been doing this. So I'm not going to waste anybody's time. I'm going to go quickly to you and just give us a quick, you know, capsule summary of your background and why you're interested in, actually, you listed three different boards and committees, capital planning, economic development and metropolitan area planning. So you just, you don't have to go into great depth about the three of them, but just generally what you're interested in. And again, a quick appreciation for your willing to throw your hat in the ring.
Sure. Thank you all for having me. I appreciate that. I, what a humbled, what an excellent set of candidates. I'm humbled to be here, so hopefully I can live up to the prior two speakers. I've been a resident for about 14 or 15 years. I was on the Board of Directors of Southborough Extended Day Program for about five or six years. I've got two daughters in the public school system. I'm currently a volunteer on the Near East School Council. I've never been appointed by the Board of Selectmen for any, anything in the past, so you've probably never seen me. I have, I did express interest in a technology committee in the past. I do follow a lot of business going on in town, maybe not as much as others, but I do follow typically through my Southborough or just looking at minutes. That's how I heard about this position. I know you're all interested how it worked, how people are finding out. I will have to say, I think that worked out incredibly well because I reached out to a few people to learn more. I did have a telephone conversation with Mr. Malinowski to just understand and try to investigate the position a little bit. Bit of personal background. I'm a WPI undergraduate, like the other folks who spoke. I'm a registered PE in Massachusetts since 2002, so about 19 years. One of the projects, I worked in engineering for about 10 years and I left and focused on marketing and product management and then came back. I currently work at VHB, Vanessa Hangan-Bresslin. And one of the projects I worked on in my first year, my first go around there was actually the Southborough Master Plan. It was actually, yeah, one of the last things I worked on just before I left and was interesting. It was right around the time I was moving here. So I was like, oh, this is really interesting. I get to work on a project in the town that I live, you know? So having that connection, a truly invested interest in what you're working on, I think kind of deepens that connection to the work. So right now I'm back at VHB. I actually manage a piece of software that focuses on asset management. We sell it into other municipalities, things like managing a pavement budget, managing a sidewalk budget, bridges and culverts. So inspecting big, major pieces of infrastructure and then try to figure out how to best use a budget for long-term spending toward making smart improvements in those kinds of things. So I think I've got a decent background in engineering, plus a few other things. I think the value I can add is that, like the other folks who spoke, I can talk engineering pretty well with other engineers. I tend to view myself as a bridge, kind of putting my foot into two different camps, being able to listen and then translate and then listen and translate back. So that's some of the things I think I can bring forward. And also, some of the customers of the product I manage are truly the people who are financially constrained, especially in the past nine, 10 months, where revenue has not been coming in because of COVID. So how do we actually move civic government forward, knowing we've got 40, 50, 60, 70 X percent less than we did the year before? So I envy the position that folks have in town with having to make those kinds of decisions. But that's my understanding or my exposure to what capital planning and large-scale budgetary decisions might entail.
You more than held up your end. That's a, that's a, that's a great and interesting summary and it certainly explains your interest. Brian, I'm going to start with you. Mr. Shea.
Sure. Alan, thank you for, again, submitting on this, actually for all three, the two committees and the council. It's good to see you stepping forward. I know with respect to Capital Planning Committee, I know the town has been and is well-served by, in my opinion, by, with VHB for a lot of the work that they're doing with the DPW. You know, heavily involved with the Main Street Design Project also, but involved with Karen on other projects. A lot of those I could see making their way onto capital improvement programs. Do you foresee, or I guess how would you, you know, knowing that you're working with VHB as well, do you think that that would present a conflict for you?
Thank you for bringing that up because I knew, I knew I had to mention I worked at VHB. First off, it's on my resume. It's not like you can't see it. You can find me on LinkedIn. But the reason why, it's good that you brought that up. In many instances where VHB has been either a town's acting engineer and then VHB has represented private development projects have come forward, there's just a very simple recusal process. So if there's, hey, what do you think about XYZ? And if I can offer up an opinion about XYZ without binding myself or putting myself in a pinch morally and ethically, I certainly will. If I think there is an opportunity to comment or offer up something on something that would bind me, I would certainly step away and say, no, that's really great. I think I need to take a step back from this. So I think just as we've, as I was trained from day one as an engineer who we often represent two sides, it's just that when that happens, you do this. It's just, it's woven into the fabric of how I've been taught as an engineer.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
All set, Brian?
Yes, I am.
Here, all right, Mr. Styris.
Thanks. Thanks, Alan, for stepping forward for this. Interesting, you mentioned the master plan thing. We are in the process of trying to finalize the 10-year update of that master plan at this point. So a couple of us are involved in that process and we need to pull you back in to figure out where we went wrong last time and how we can do a better job. Similar to the questions I've asked previously, how would you describe your connection to town budget history, activities, et cetera, through town meeting attendance or other kinds of activities that sort of keep you in touch with where we've been coming from in terms of resources available to develop capital plans and projects?
I think at a high level, we don't have enough resources. I've never worked with a municipality who says, nah, we're, 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 we're pretty good for budget. It's never, that's never the case. I do know I've attended a couple of town meetings in the past and I think, I think, I'm trying to think which ones I attended most recently. I can't recall. I've not attended every single one. It just hasn't typically worked out in terms of schedule. I do think the addition of having childcare certainly helps. Or even moving it to Saturday was, in my opinion, just was such a great move because it made it such a challenge for the evening events. But that aside, I've attended a couple of them. I know they're big to-dos, big affairs, lots of decisions are made. It is impossible to make everyone happy. There is a lot to spend money on. And I think it's just a balancing act of what is a criticality, what's the risk of, what's the risk of exposure, what's the risk of failure? And it's, I think it's easy to say qualitatively, well, this is important, and this is important, and this is important. Well, if everything's important, nothing's important, right? So finding a way to, and this is the engineering me coming out, almost finding a way to kind of quantitatively rank things and stack rank things and figure things out. And then try to say, okay, now that we have all these things figured out, this is, this is a good way to move forward with how to prioritize that spending.
Okay, thanks very much. That takes care of my questions, Marty. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sam. Ms. Brashia.
Good evening, Alan. Thank you for coming. First off, I want to say I really like your background. You know, I think that's something you should share with the board.
Happy to do so.
Also, I appreciate that you applied for more than one committee on the off-chance that, again, not that you're not completely qualified and would do amazing on this, but, you know, we do have three great candidates. So I appreciate that you've given us other options to be able to utilize all that you bring to the table. I'm going to do, kind of share one of the questions that I had before you. You said you had had a conversation with Mr. Malinowski. And based on that conversation, what is one of the things you're most interested in jumping into and you think your expertise could be most utilized with?
I think I was speaking with Jason, it must have been, I think it was about two weeks ago, I forget the exact day, it was recently, which it was maybe just a day or two before I submitted my application because I wanted to actually speak with someone on the board to understand, or the committee to understand what things were like before I went and pulled the trigger. Because what I wanted to understand was what is the time commitment? Because I want to make sure if you were looking for someone for, and I'm exaggerating, but like 30 hours a week, I wasn't going to participate, not because I'm not afraid of a commitment, but I didn't want to be that person who didn't pull their weight, right? So I wanted to understand, is it something I can commit to? And I think it is something I could. And then I said, so what are the kind of things you're, you know, you're working on or going through? When I was, heard about the contemplation of closing a school, I was like, wow, that's really interesting. Because on the one hand, like one of the reasons my wife and I moved here was because of the fantastic school system. So my knee-jerk reaction was, no, 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 the schools are great. But then I had to think it through a little more, like, wait a second. And so then the secondary cumulative effects and the implications of, what if you close the school? What could you do with the land? Could you repurpose the building? Could you repurpose the building as is? Or would you have to make retro? Or, and so all these kind of things started spinning around. And that got me really interested. And I know we're already kind of partway through that consideration process, so I don't know what point I could jump in and make an impact, but that project or projects like that, these big scale things where it's like, hey, did you ever think about completely flipping the script on something like that? It's just really interesting. So our conversation more was around the board, the structure of the board and the commitment. We didn't talk about too much about a particular project, but that one, that one in particular, as briefly as we talked about it, was pretty interesting to me.
Okay, great. Great answer. And again, thank you for stepping forward. I'm all set, Marty.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Ms. Malinowski.
Thanks, Alan, and thank you for your interest in all the committees. All my capital questions were taken, so I'm actually going to ask an EDC question. And I guess it's a two-part question. What interests you about EDC and what do you think could, you could bring to the table? And I guess I have a third part to that, too, is how closely are you following the downtown initiative? And does that interest you or are you more interested in Route 9?
So great. So I'm interested in all three, just because, probably because of my background, as I explained. If, you know, hey, this civil engineering guy focused on transportation, that's just kind of my thing. So that's why I do have an interest in all three of these and probably in that order. But as if honestly, if I were to But as if honestly, if I were to get offered the option to join any one of them, I would be just as happy. So EDC is interesting to me because one of my friends serves on this, one of the subcommittees, Julie Connolly. And just hearing what's going on and knowing that area of town and driving through it saying, it sure would be great if we could do more here. But then also knowing, it's not just simply saying, oh, we should just do more here. We should just put in a building. It's not just putting in something. There are so many things behind the scenes, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's navigating, perhaps tense political issues or stakeholder engagement or stakeholder agreement. Those are all things that I think are parts of the equation and it's not a simple equation to fix. So I have an interest in the downtown area because I go through there. I have an interest in Route 9 just because the tax base in Southborough is predominantly residential. We don't have a ton of retail and things like that, like one of our neighbors of Natick, which is why their tax base is so great. So finding ways to attract and maintain a commercial tax base on Route 9 is certainly interesting. But again, along with that, isn't just saying, okay, we'll just, let's, let's change zoning and put more buildings in. It's what's going to attract people to come here and then again, keep, let them stay and make it, you know, worthwhile for them to actually make that decision to go through a real estate transaction and put their roots down.
Okay, thank you. And it sounds like you, if you've had conversations with Julie about how EDC works and the structure there, have you had a chance to watch any of their meetings?
So similar with both capital and EDC, I'm a, if you could see my personal web browser at home, I've probably got about 30 open tabs between past meeting minutes and paused YouTube events. So it's one of those things where I'm going to open up a bunch of stuff and try to consume it when I can. So it's been bits and pieces. But admittedly, I've not, I've not watched several meetings, you know, start to finish. But it's definitely something that I know that were I to move forward, then if my candidacy were considered, then it's like, I need to get smart if I'm going to be an active participant, so.
Great. Thank you so much, Alan.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chelsea. Alan, I don't have anything. Not surprisingly, these folks have covered the ground. I guess something I should have said, both to Mr. Reed and to Mr. Internetter, but the cumulative effect when you were speaking really just sort of hit me that, you know, there are a lot of terrific things about Southborough, but one of the truly terrific things is the, just the wealth of talent that the town has. And boy, oh, boy, has that been underscored by these three discussions tonight. So thank you for your interest. You know, you bring a terrific background and enthusiasm to these areas and we will be in touch.
I appreciate your time. Thanks so much.
All right, take care.
Take care.
All right, Mr. Malinowski sent a chat saying that he wanted to weigh in after we talked to all three gentlemen. So Vanessa, if you can bring Mr. Malinowski over.
Hey, Marty, how are you?
Good, Jason. Are you, you know, scrambling here to become an ex-officio member of the Board of Selectmen?
No, I'm not. And I'm not going to make your job any easier. You know, that's why you are all the appointing authority. I just figured I'd add a few comments in here. Obviously, you know, speaking on behalf of capital, we're obviously thrilled that we have three people looking to join our committee. And it doesn't make your job any easier, of course, but I did have a chance to talk live to two out of the three applicants, as they noted, and exchanged emails with John. I would just say, you know, underscore the point that you already made, Marty, we're halfway through. We do expect that we'll have more than one opening in the near term. So wherever you go as a board tonight, I would just, you know, whoever isn't on that appointment list, you know, obviously, hopefully they stay interested in follow our meetings because we all know that boards and committees are cyclical and people have other commitments. And obviously, we, we know of certain things related to advisory that are forthcoming. You know, I think when we look at commitment from, from our committee, right, we've set up at 7:30 on Monday nights every other week and have had no reason to alter that schedule for quite a period of time. So I think that would be the level of commitment we are looking for, for whoever you do decide to appoint. And I guess I'll just add my kudos to this process. I know I've been, you know, you know, harping on this for quite a while, given some of our conversations and updates that capital planning has been making. But, you know, this is clearly this, what we just did in terms of this recruitment process works. So hopefully, you know, for whatever other boards and committees you're looking to drum up interest for or get specific expertise, I hope the same process works in terms of notification of the chair, allowing the chair to reach out and offer time to talk to these candidates, because obviously it makes them better prepared for the discussion with all of you, but also just the advertising needs in terms of social media, et cetera, goes a long way.
All right, thanks, Jason. All right. Before we move on to our other items, discussion, I mean, we don't have to make a decision tonight. I'm not sure that we're going to get any additional, you know, qualitative information. So I think we've got a basis for making a decision tonight, but I will open up for discussion. And also about, about a direction, if we are going to go with making a selection tonight, what direction that might be, so.
I don't see why we don't make a decision. As you say, I don't think there's a lot more data out there that we need to collect.
All right, Mr. Stivers, you started, so. Everybody else didn't take a step forward, you did, so you get to go first.
Fantastic, hello. As you said, Marty, a very strong set of candidates. I can see all three being a very effective participant in the Capital Planning Committee for a variety of reasons. I guess I am also interested in looking at sort of the larger picture in terms of finding a position for all three of these folks someplace. I don't want to lose any of them. And so in terms of background, it seems to me that, I guess, I lean toward Mr. Reed for this position initially. And maybe try to think of Mr. Belniak in terms of the EDC position. I think he's got some strengths that could do that. Yeah, Mr. Internetter, again, I think is a great candidate for, as Jason mentioned, maybe another spot opening up on capital planning that Mr. Internetter said that you would also be interested in other roles in town committees. And so maybe there are other places that could be an opening. So again, I, I can be convinced otherwise, but if I had to, you know, make a decision right now, that would be where I would be leaning to try to keep all three involved in the process and take advantage of their considerable skills. I think we've got a great, great set of choices here.
Right, good thoughts, Lisa.
All right, thank you. Sam, I'm similar with you that I think we have three great people and I would hate the, to miss the opportunity. I think one of the key points that Jason touched on as well is we know, you know, that there's going to be additional opportunities at some point on capital. The only place I differ was based on some of the responses. Mr. Belniak, I think his, his energy that he would bring to EDC would be wonderful and his knowledge. I was leaning more towards, I'm not going to butcher his last name, our first candidate, Steve, for filling this position initially and then, then Mr. Reed for if another position opens up.
As I say, I don't, you know, feel strongly about it in the sense of I had to make the decision, that's where I would lean, but I think we win either way, frankly.
Agreed, Sam. I agree.
All right, Ms. Malinowski?
So if I, I had to decide tonight, I would go with Steve on capital just based on his answer on the vision of making like town-wide good decisions. I think he also has the engineering piece to it, which I think is a huge asset. But I also think the perspective that he had on kind of what capital's charge is, I think that kind of resonated with me. And then I would, I agree with Lisa on the energy that Mr. Belniak had, and I think that would go well with EDC. And, you know, I think as we kind of watch what happens with advisory and capital and as positions open up, then I think we can keep Mr. Reed on kind of a tickler list for future consideration if that opens up.
All right, and Mr. Shea?
Thanks. So, you know, these, it was really, really great that we had the opportunity to speak with all three. You know, you know, they provided information ahead of time. What really impressed me with Mr. Belniak and why I thought that he would be, and still do think he'd be a great Capital Planning Committee addition, is the focus on asset management that he has with his work. But then in hearing him talk and answering questions that you had, Chelsea, on EDC, you know, it's just great to see him, you know, so, you know, excited by opportunities on Route 9, excited with opportunities downtown. And I think that he would be a tremendous addition to EDC. I don't think we can, we could go wrong with that. You know, very, very impressed with both John and Steve and could go either way. You know, if there is another opportunity that does come up in the future on the capital planning, you know, I would like to commit to appointing one, who, if one does not get appointed tonight, to committing that person for the next available spot. You know, these are the three people who answered the call for openings to that committee. And I think that we would, you know, owe it to them to give them the first chance at another opening if it were to come up as well. And I think just to be safe and have absolutely no qualms whatsoever with Steve, but if there were a vote on Steve, I think it'd be advisable with other relations that I know that our company has had in designs that have utilized the East Coast slurry, I would, I might just abstain from that vote. But, you know, Steve, if you are listening, it's in no way, shape or form reflective on any hesitancy to appoint you to that committee, so.
All right, having listened to this, I mean, to talk about a punt, I agree with everybody. But really, I do agree with everybody and I think actually the easy decision, if it's that, is, Mr. Belniak, and I see you're still out there and it's got nothing to do with, with whether or not you'd be a valuable member of capital planning. But I'm telling you, if I were going to sort of outline an answer that someone could and should give for interest in economic development and intersecting with town resource questions, particularly where towns, including this one, find themselves these days, I'm not sure if I could have framed a better answer. So I guess I'll do the, so I, I, I don't think there's any disagreement that Mr. Belniak, and hopefully he'll accept it, that there'll be a motion to appoint him to the EDC. The second one is, I guess, and I agree that, 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 that both of the other two gentlemen are going to end up on the, on capital planning. And it's not just because, gee, is somebody going to get off? I mean, we are, we are reconstituting the, the committee because of concerns about advisory, about them being ad hoc versus long-term. And so I think both of these gentlemen are going to be on capital planning in the relatively short term. I guess my motion would be for, for Mr. Internetter to get that appointment now. And obviously, it's got nothing to do with, with Mr. Reed not being a terrific candidate. I just think that, 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 you know, the, the, the jump ball went his way in my mind. So that'd be my motion. And if it's seconded, we'll see where the votes fall out.
Second.
All right, we've had discussion already. Ms. Brascio?
Sorry, did you want to break up the motion, though, so Brian can vote on the EDC appointment?
Well, I'll look back to that.
So your motion was strictly for Steve?
I'm sorry, okay, got it. Okay.
All right, for appointment to the capital planning, for the, for the currently singly open position on capital planning. And it was seconded, and Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea, recusing?
I will abstain from this vote, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. It is unanimous. I think I'm, I'm fine moving that, that, that there is a soon-to-be in everybody's mind likely vacancy on the Capital Planning Committee. And I guess my motion would be that for purposes of that, that we will consider only the candidates who were before us tonight for that open position.
Second.
Discussion, none. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. That's unanimous as well. And my final motion will be to appoint Mr. Belniak. He put it on his form. He gave the best answer I've heard in a long time and as a member of the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shea. Discussion, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. Everyone, thank you very much. Again, this was a, it's, you know, we have, we have selectmen's meetings where, where, you know, you feel like hitting your head against the wall at the end of it. This was a nice start to this one with, with three incredibly talented candidates to serve on town committees, and I thank you for that. And with that, we are ready to move on to our next item, which is the town's fiscal year 20 audit, Mr. Frayer. And he's out there. Hopefully, we'll be here in just a second. All right, we can see your name, Mr. Frayer. You're muted, now you're unmuted.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good. All right, here we go.
Here we go. Well, welcome. You and I have, I think we may have waved at each other across the table last year.
Yes.
But Marty Healy, I'm the chair now, so welcome. Appreciate your making yourself available and appreciate the, the good work you've done and continue to do on behalf of the town of Southborough. And you are going to walk us through our FY '20 audit.
Okay, thanks. Hopefully, I'm not the person that makes you want to bang your head against the.
Well, let's. My body language usually tells, tells people.
I'll start with just a brief overview. The audit went well. We did most of it this year off-site because of the whole COVID thing. But we did have to go onsite for some things that just were a little too difficult to do off-site. And that went fine. There were no major surprises. We didn't have to make any restatements to the general ledger. All we had to do was really make adjustments to get to the, the format that GASB requires in the financial statements, which we have to do on every audit. Another thing about this year is there were no changes to any of the auditing or accounting standards from GASB or OMB or GAO or any of the other acronyms. They actually delayed a lot of the standards for a year due to the COVID situation. So I'm hoping everybody has the charts. I don't know if those are going to come up, or you just look at them yourself. There's a PowerPoint that was sent.
I believe that Brian is going to share his screen.
Okay.
So he can put up, he can put up your slides, Bill.
All right, thanks. Then we'll, we'll jump into the first one.
Mark, was that sent out? I didn't get that PowerPoint.
Yeah, that was, that was sent, that was in the packet, Sam.
Okay, that's what we, that's all that we're going to get then?
Yes. But the management letter and the financials have been sent previously. And I think Brian Valentine sent them again, but I'm happy to forward them to you again if that would be helpful.
My email doesn't seem to be working from the town these days, so, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'll send them to you now. Yeah, I'll send them to you now.
Yeah, and just confirm, Mark, just make sure they're part of the, I mean, they're, obviously, they're a document we're talking about tonight, so it's going to be part of the minutes anyway.
Correct.
Okay.
So should I start, or?
Yeah, I just need someone to allow me to share my screen, it's not letting me yet.
But Mr. Frayer, we'll get there in terms of the sharing. But why don't we start with your pros?
Okay, sure, so the, the first chart that you will hopefully soon have, what I, what I try, I guess, to just step back, I, what I try to do is pick, now, there's 60 pages or however many, 50 or 60 pages in the financial statements now, there used to be about 20 years ago, but I try to pick some of the key numbers, the larger numbers, and also some of the things that the bond people, S&amp;P and Moody's, seem to focus on. And just to kind of talk about them, so. The first chart talks, talks about the summary of the revenues and expenses for the general fund. Now, the general fund makes up the vast majority of percentage of the numbers that are in the financial statements, at least on the fund-based side. So what I, what these charts do is they show a five-year trend, rather than just looking at the current year or looking at the current year versus the prior year. I always think it's good to see, you know, a five-year trend, so you can kind of see whether there's patterns or how things are changing over the long term. So for the general fund, I'm just going to focus on the percentages. The changes over the last five years have ranged from 6.9 to this year 0.3. And it averages out 3.2% growth over the last five years. So as we've talked about in the past, people like to see something that I would say is in the, you know, I know this is kind of a broad range, but the 2% to 5%, 2% to 4%, 2% to 5% growth range. I've been in situations where Moody's or S&amp;P have asked towns that have had several years of very small growth, you know, is there a reason? Are you having trouble keeping up with revenues, you know, generating revenue sources? On the other hand, if those percentages were too high year after year after year, they might think that it's not sustainable and would want to know why the budgets seem to keep jumping year after year by a large amount. So you've ranged from 0.3 to 6.9, averaging out 3.2. I really think that's a, that's a good place to be over a five-year period. Same thing on the expenditure side, you've gone from a low, which was this year of 1.8, to a high of 5.8, but you've averaged out 3.1%. So, you know, when I see anything in the 2% to 4% range, I feel like you're in a, you know, you're in a good place where you're hat, you're showing growth, but it's, it's not too high to be unsustainable. The big key difference in this five-year period was the debt service on the public safety building. So, you know, without that, these numbers would have been, would have been lower, but they still would have been probably over 2%. But you had a big jump from 18 to 19 on both the revenue and expense side due to the debt service on the, on the public safety building. So that's the first slide, I guess.
So if I, if I, if I'm hearing you correctly, sir, it is, and I'm not asking you to do the math in your head, but just, just generally, that, that absent that spike from the public safety building, that those averages of 3.2% and 3.1% likely would have been in the mid-2s to maybe.
Yeah, probably in the mid-2s. You know, the hard thing about any of, any of this analysis over time is so many things change. There was, when you look at the change just from 19 to 20, the revenues only went up by 0.3%. Now, that's a very small amount, given you have a 2.5% proposition, 2.5% rate raise plus any new growth. But what happened between 19 and 20 is, in 19, you got your last payment from the state MSBA on the old, old-school debt, you were in the last year. So while you would have had, you know, you wouldn't have had as big an increase from 18 to 19 because of the public safety debt, you wouldn't have had as small an increase from 19 to 20 because the MSBA repayments, which were probably 20 years or more, stopped, you know, ended at 19. So that's why I kind of like to look at five years, you can focus in on any given year and say, oh, is there something wrong? Is it too high, is it too low? But I think when you look at a longer period of time and you see an average number that sort of makes you feel good. You know, because, yes, on the one hand, maybe it would have been 2.5 or in the low 2s without the public safety debt, but without the MSBA thing going the other way, you know, you probably would have been back up close to 3.
God, that's a pretty good anecdotal explanation about why you do it the way you do it.
Yeah.
Marty?
Oops, sorry.
Sorry, can I just up in, is, is Brian able to share his screen? I think people that may be watching at home or in the participant room.
I think he said that he wasn't able to, has that changed, Brian?
You're muted.
Brian, you're muted.
Yeah, I should be sharing it now, actually, I hope that's what it's.
Brian, we made you host, so you have all full privileges. Do you see the, is the green share screen button lit up at the bottom of your screen?
Yeah.
All right, there we go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Hey, great, so that was the first one we just spoke about, and you can kind of see there now how there was a big jump from 18 to 19 because of the public safety debt on both sides, and then there was a lower amount from 19 to 20. You didn't, you know, there were some, definitely some revenue impacts from COVID, but they weren't significant. And that's what I'm finding in most towns, is that the, the impact of the COVID thing wasn't as bad as I was initially thinking it might be. Now, I haven't looked at your 21 numbers, and maybe you're seeing other things in 21. And granted, the shutdown didn't happen until March. But really, these, the two sort of more out-of-the-box unusual years, 18 to 19, 19 and 20, were, were debt service for public safety, and then 19 to 20 was the MSBA debt falling off. But again, I, I think, you know, looking at that 3.2%, 3.1%, it's almost the sweet spot, because I always throw around 2, 2% to 4, you know, you could say 2% to 5, but you're kind of right, I think, in a good spot where you can, you know, there's obvious reasons why things grow, salary increases, retirement costs, et cetera, et cetera. But it's not, it's not so high as to be questioned, and not so low as to be questioned. So I hope that makes sense. The, the second page. So the first column of numbers, what I like to show is you go to town meeting every year using some amount of free cash that was certified the year before. And then you have your year, and your revenues are typically a little bit over budget, and your expenses are typically a little under budget. And then you have a net amount, which is the difference between what you appropriated from free cash to use and what you actually needed. And there's either a plus or minus, so that, I hope that's not too convoluted, but that's that first set of numbers, is if you plan to use a million, how much did you end up putting back in the coffers? And as you can see, until 19 and 20, you really were very close to regenerating the free cash that you used, which is good, because then you have it for the next, for the next year. If you were constantly showing negative numbers here, you would slowly be drawing down on free cash and having less and less every, every year to, to use. So again, you know, looking at it over a five-year period, it averages, which is not on there, averages about a $90,000 plus, meaning you, your budgetary variances on the revenue and expense side were $90,000 better than the amount you plan to use from free cash going into the year, which means that it's not being replenished by a lot more, but it's being replenished by a little more. And that means you're not really, you know, drawing down over time, because I've seen that happen in towns where the free cash gets used, and every year, there's less and less being replenished, and, you know, the, the budgetary vice gets tightened every year when you have 2,000, 200,000 less to use from free cash. So that's, so that's a, that's a good set of numbers. Columns. Sorry, getting a low battery on my computer thing, may have to step out to get a plug. The last two columns are the budget to actual numbers. And as anybody who's been at the, at the previous meetings probably remembers, again, I think, you know, the sweet spot here is, is lower than the other side we talked about. I think it's more like a 1% to 3%. So again, you don't want your budget so tight that year after year after year, you're barely, you know, you're barely meeting your budget on the revenue side, or you're barely turning in any money, turning money back on the expense side. You want there to be some cushion and some wiggle room for the bad years when they come. And obviously, 20, those budgetary variances, at least on the revenue side, were lower than the previous four years. You've always been, as you can see on the expense side, right around 1%, meaning, you know, 1% is.
His battery died. He'll be back in a second.
While we're waiting for him to rejoin, I was going to wait until he went through all of his slides and then go around with questions, I mean, there aren't that many of them unless someone has. By the same token, if someone wants to, you know, throw in a chat or raise your hand if there's something particular, obviously, fire away. Fair enough? Okay.
I have a general question.
Yes, Sam?
Just, this is for Brian Moore. I looked at the management letter, Brian, and clearly, there are no material weaknesses or the two top categories, nothing there, but he had a number of suggestions for things, and we actually on track, you agree with those findings? And we're on track to address all of those points that were identified in this audit?
Yeah, so there's a couple, there, there's a couple different ones there, and a few have been on there a couple of years, like a policy handbook, and, you know, we, that's more of a, anyone that knows policy handbooks, it's, it's more of finding the time to get them done. But yes, that's on our list. There's a couple of other things about cash receipts that we're well aware of that the town accountant and myself need to sort of follow up with on an annual basis.
Water fund question, for example?
Right, the water fund question, which is all set, that, that will be all set. So there's, there's a couple I call standard ones that are more long-term that we look at or we keep, keep, you know, keep track of. And then there's a few others that are one-time things, like the water fund or the premium comment or something like that. So yes, but I mean, you're right, there's nothing material there, too material, but we do have a, we have a handle on it.
Nothing that you consider to be urgent necessarily at this point in terms of.
No, I mean, the Friends, the Friends, the, the cash receipt one, the Friends comment is kind of important because it's a, it's, you know, it's an exposure. So we're, you know, we're, we're, again, that's, that's me and Carla sort of keeping on top of that annually. And, and, you know, me and Heidi, when she was here, actually went down and looked at those accounts and talked to Pam and Sarah, so we got to do that again, and it's more staying on top of it. I think we're good.
A number of Friends accounts out there that people have asked questions about periodically, so that seems like it's something that's sort of generically.
Brian, Sam, let me follow up on that, and, and, you know, we're not going to address it tonight, but it sounds like what would make a lot of sense is, whether it's February 16th or, or one of the meetings in March, for us to have, I know we're, you know, up to our hips in budget stuff, but to spend a half hour or so walking through the recommendations in the, in the letter and, you know, thinking about a timetable for addressing them, you know, honestly, in, in almost the way that, 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 you know, we now have a goals sheet and a, and a town administrator sheet. You know, it's not, it's not unreasonable, particularly if it's a result of our auditor listing things, to have a timeline for how we're addressing them, does that make sense to you?
It makes sense to me, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, we can follow up, and certainly, yeah.
What makes, is, is February 16th too soon? Should we do it at one of the March meetings? What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, the, the comments are pretty, pretty benign for the most part, so I don't see why we couldn't do the 16th.
Okay.
You know, I.
All right.
Unless Carla yells at me.
Yeah, and I'll take a look at the rest of it at the end when we, when we meet and, and, but at least keep it in the back of your mind that we might be undertaking to do that. You know what I'm going to do? Brian, since you're here anyway, and the next item is the, the budget update, I'm just, you know, if, if my battery died, I'm not sure when I'd be back, you know, in, in a, in a meeting. So we may not see Mr. Frayer for a while. So Brian, why don't we shift it over to you, go to the next item on schedule appointments and, and get your, I think relatively quick, budget summary of where things stand right now?
Yeah, poor Bill probably has to restart his computer, but, so, since we last spoke, you know, this is sort of a, a moving target every week, we could, well, every day, we could probably go over this. But, you know, I think the most significant items, and Mark can correct me, I always find something I missed, but the most significant item since we last met, the expected tax increase rate is about 8.13 right now. ACABET, we had bad news, we have four new students, and it's up about 28%. Now that will be revisited, just like, I think, Algonquin and K-8, well, you know, they're not done yet, I think, with the state aid and redoing their numbers, so I expect, I'm hoping they come down, I think they will. But that's where it stands right now. We did get, it, it's a little bit of a mixed, mixed bag, because we got good news for the local aid. We expected a 5% cut, and we actually, from the governor's budget, we're actually holding steady and actually increased a little bit, so that, that gave us about 150,000. We did the water fund, is an enterprise fund that gives us money annually for indirect costs, and that, after I redid the numbers, gave us about another 40,000. So, so if you, if you take all that and you kind of jiggle it around, we're kind of close to where we were last time we spoke, even though, even though all these different cost centers are a little different, we're kind of close to where we were, a little bit better, but. So what in the future are we waiting for? We're waiting for health insurance to settle out. We've got a dedicated rate hold for Fallon. We've got our TUS plan, which is the biggest, bigger plan, we're waiting to hear from, and I expect that to come down, but we will know that within a week or two. The personnel board just voted the SAP increase, so we have to put that into the budgets. It's not a whole lot of money. They had planned on 2.5% and they voted on 2.8%. So that 0.3% is about $10,000, $15,000 overall. But we have to adjust, obviously, 10 budgets or 15 budgets to account for that. Trying to think what else we're waiting on. Again, the schools.
Brian, I'm going to interrupt you and just, Vanessa just sent a chat saying that Mr. Frayer is back. So I guess my question is, so we're not too sort of disjointed here, are you just about done?
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 I didn't really have too much more to say, I think, well. Oh, the only real last thing I wanted to say is your budget exercise I will send out by the end of this week. And I will also send out the, the budget recap that we have, so you can see where we stand. So you'll be getting some, some information by the end of, by the end of Friday.
Okay, all right, so we used our time, and Vanessa tells me that Mr. Frayer is ready to, he's recharged his battery. Billy, you there?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
My internet went out, and that took longer than getting a cord for the battery. So we're on the sec, we're on the second slide, and I think I was, I was sort of saying that, you know, what I, what I usually look for and what I say at most of these meetings in the different towns is you don't want the revenues or expenditures on the budgetary side to be too tight, because there are going to be bad years, there are going to be years where it just seems like tax, you know, property tax. property tax receivables go up, motor vehicle goes down, building permits go down. You just have one of those years. So you like to build in that cushion and on, there really isn't anything hard and fast on any of these numbers. You know, there isn't something you can go to to say, you know, you should be between X and Y. But I've always said, I, I like you to be between, you know, one and three percent. So if you can be within one of, one to three percent, I think you're in a good place. Obviously, if you have a good year where you're way over budget on the revenues or way under budget on the expense, you know, as long as it only happens one time, I think that's fine. The concern I have is when the budgets get so tight on both sides of the fence that you just don't have room to manipulate through a bad year. So these numbers, I think, you know, on the revenue side, you, you've gone from 3.3 as the high, 1.9, but you're usually in the twos and on average you're in the twos. That's great. The expense side is definitely tight. You've stayed, the highest you've been in five years is 1.1% favorable. Couple of years you've been 0.7, but if you're doing a little better on the revenue side and you're maybe not doing as well on the expenditure side, at least combined, you're, you're in a good place that the budgets don't seem too tight. So I think, you know, I don't think, I think that's, these are a good set of numbers. Does anybody want to talk about that slide before we move on?
I have just one very quick question, and that is, i- if, if the, you know, if you look at the first three years, 16, 17, 18, there's, there, there's not a whole lot of, of, um, fluctuation and you're, you'd probably average out to about what you were talking about. The, the, the next two years, you're, you know, including them in the five or by themselves, you know, the, the, the average, um, fluctuation, um, might not, um, you know, raise any alarms. But, but is it a bit of a red flag if there's sort of, you know, wildly on one side, a big up? And then the next year, a big down, and if that pattern sort of occurred?
I think if you were beyond these ranges, if the highs were in the fives and the lows were close to zero or negative, you might have, you know, some concern. But I don't think numbers like this where you've gone 2.9, 2.4, 2.7, up to 3.3, down to 1.9, and especially, you know, this year with COVID, I, I don't think that there's a negativity to that. Um, like I said, I think if you were constantly vacillating between, you know, five and six percent and then down to zero or negative and back and forth, then they might look at that and say, you know, what's going on with the budgets here? You know, are they reacting just, oh, we have money, we can spend it. But then, oh, oh, we had a bad year, we didn't expect it. So next year we pull back. You're not doing that. It's consistent. And there are always going to be those years where, like I said, you just have a strong motor vehicle year. Um, you have a large building permit. I mean, anything can happen.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Sure. Uh, the next slide is the status of town reserves. So the, the bond rating agencies tend to look at two things, free cash and stabilization. And so here is your five-year trend and, you know, again, it can go up or down. Like 19 went up because you had that good year on the revenue side that we saw on the previous page. Um, but this, you know, believe me, compared to what, what I see sometimes, this is not, you know, wild swings. You, you went from, um, a low of 1.2 to a high of 1.8, but you're averaging, you know, somewhere in the 1.5 area, 1.4, 1.5 area. Um, so that's fairly consistent. And I think the, the last couple of pages explain why. Uh, the stabilization, you obviously haven't put any new money in. It's just growing because of interest. Um, so that's obviously stayed fairly consistent. The percentage of budget, I think I've said this to you for the past many years, um, you're on the low side. You know, they typically look at, um, there's a lot of different numbers thrown around. As I said, you can't go to a book and find the number, but eight to 12 is often used. Um, some people use five to 15, that's quite a range. But suffice it to say, you know, compared to most of my communities, um, you're on the low side. And we've talked about why, I mean, at one point you had a extremely large stabilization fund, probably too high, and that got drawn down. I'm going back quite a few years now. That got drawn down, um, over time. Um, and budgetary constraints and trying to prioritize OPEB and the large increases you have to absorb for the retirement systems, unfunded liability. Um, with all that going on, you really haven't been able to, to add to stabilization. So um, that's definitely on the lower side. Next, um, capital assets. So these are all of your, what you might call fixed assets. Gatsby calls them capital assets, which are buildings, roads, infrastructure, water sewer, infrastructure, uh, water infrastructure, um, equipment. The big numbers are obviously buildings and infrastructure. And again, I like to show this because it is one of the biggest numbers in the financial statements. Your capital assets, as you can see, approaching 100 mil, um, this is net of depreciation. So it's not gross assets, it's net assets, um, approaching 100 million. Um, and you can see that there has been some growth, particularly with this public safety project. The last few years, you've taken some bigger jumps than you normally would. I guess what I like to, to say about this, this, um, thing is, is the, the, the bond rating agencies like to see towns continuing to make investments over time. If you kept seeing this number go down, meaning the depreciation on your assets was not being dealt with every year by, by adding to your assets and you saw this net number just slowly going down over time, they would assume that for some reason you're not able to reinvest in your fixed assets. Either you can't, you don't want to, you can't afford the borrowing. Um, I think your town's been really good at only borrowing for the big stuff, which is great because some towns seem to borrow for equipment and little things. And you've been trying to prioritize the use of free cash to some of your capital, uh, your capital budget. So in addition to the big projects, which recently has only been that public safety building, you have been fairly consistent with equipment and infrastructure, roads in, in trying to, to keep things up. So over the five years, the change was almost 33%. Um, the five-year average was six and a half percent. So again, I think the main point of this chart because, you know, is, it is a big number. And I just wanted to show that, you know, the, the, this kind of, this set of numbers over time would be looked at favorably because you're clearly reinvesting and you're not deferring maintenance or deferring capital replacement. And that's, that's looked at as a positive, obviously.
Marty, can I ask a question on this?
Absolutely.
Okay. So Billy, now I understand in looking at this, and, and again, I've only been on the board for four years. So, um, in, obviously the public safety building is, is one of the drivers of doing the five-year change to 32%. I know you've done the audits for the town for a long time. Just randomly off the top of your head, historically, say, back another five years, go back 10 years, uh, prior to the public safety building, it, it, do you have an idea of what the change may have been? Was it more on track with a, you know, a, a smaller growth of 1, 2, 3, 4%?
Yeah, um, you know, not quoting me because I don't have the number, numbers right in front of me. But I believe, you know, you didn't have any major projects for a long time, in part because back in the nineties, you had that period of all the schools being done. So you had a period where I don't remember exactly how much it was combined, but it was, I think in the $40 million, mid 40 area. So you had that time when you were making some big investments in education. That debt carried for a while. So I think there was some reticence to do it. You were still trying, you know, you've been, as I said, good at replacing equipment, trying to have your road projects using the chapter 90 money that comes in from the state to do road projects. Water has been good with keeping up with their infrastructure. But big projects, no, um, you know, that really hasn't happened. So my guess is if we went from 2011 to 2015, these numbers would be much lower, much lower. What we're gonna see on the next page, if, if no one else has a question on this page, it's kind of reflective in your debt because there was a period where your debt was, you know, in the forties or fifties. But again, remember a lot of, a good chunk of that, and I won't say a lot, but a good percentage of that was coming back from MSBA. So it wasn't total town debt. It was, you know, remember one year someone was a, a little concerned about the size of the debt number. And I said, you really have to look at it as, as the net debt because the state is giving you X amount. Um, you could compare yourself to another town, that next town could have more debt. I mean, less debt than you, but in reality you had less if you backed up what was being reimbursed from the state. So you can see that this number, um, with the debt, you know, for, for the sized town and the sized budget, your debt for a long time was low, um, as the school debt, the old school debt was being paid down. And now you can see that it, you know, it's jumped up the last couple of years because, or from 17 to 18, 18 to 19, because of the public safety project. And there wasn't any major borrowing or any borrowing, I don't think, long-term done in 20. So the principal payments, you know, dropped that again. But you're still in a, you know, for the, for the budget size you are, you know, your, your debt is, and, and I'm sure Mark and Brian, you know, have, have talked to this, but it, you know, you're in a good place. You're not over leveraged by any means. Okay, last sheet, everybody's favorite topic, these long-term liabilities. So if anybody's new, um, you know, we talk about OPEB, that's the other post-employment benefits, which is the retiree health insurance benefit. It's provided by the town and then, uh, the pension liability, which is the regional retirement system. And up until, oh, I don't know, six or seven years ago, these numbers weren't even in the financial statements. And Gatsby started seeing not so much in the small towns, but in the states and these bigger cities, these looming huge liabilities. So they wanted to make sure that these were reflected in the financial statements. So you had to start, you have to hire an actuary, which you, you all do every year, to come up with an actuarially determined liability number for your OPEB. And the regional system hires an actuary every year to, to get, uh, pension liability and actually, actuarially determined pension liability that then gets allocated to all the members, including Southborough. So we'll talk about these separate, um, I guess the pensions a little easier because it's kind of out of your control. It's the regional systems ballgame. Um, you can see that that is growing. Um, there's a little bit of a disconnect because your assessments have been growing over the last several years in part to address this unfunded liability. So I recently, and a couple of years ago, I, I talked to, uh, the actuary for one of the regional systems. And I said, can you explain to me these, these assessments are jumping, jumping, jumping? And then we get the report every year and the pension liability is going up. I'm not an actuary, so I can't explain it in detail, but the message I got is that the way these regional systems are amortizing the unfunded liabilities, by statute, they have to be, um, down to zero by the mid 2030s. But the way it's being done is you don't see the benefits until, you know, year X, which is probably another five or six years out. But then the liability falls precipitously at that point. So they are on target to meet that 2034, 2035. I don't know where, where your system and, and you are with that. Um, but allegedly, if nothing changes and the state doesn't extend the number of years again, uh, which they've done several times in the past when there's been recessions, this pension, net pension liability is supposed to be zero by the mid 2030s. We'll see. Again, that's out of your hands. You get your assessment from the regional system and you pay it. But they are on track to do that. OPEB, on the other hand, is just a Southborough, uh, every town has their own OPEB liability, if you will. There's no regional systems for this. So again, up until, you know, seven years ago or so, this liability wasn't on anybody's radar. And then Gatsby said, you know, these are getting to be pretty big liabilities. The promise to contribute to your employees' retiree health insurance for the rest of their lives. Um, from an accounting standpoint, the idea is that the liability for each employee is put on the books over the estimated life of their employment. So that by the time they retire, the full liability for the estimated rest of their life, based on all those actuarial assumptions, um, is on the books. So Gatsby can only make you record the liability. They can't make you fund it. But what this did was it put a lot of focus on it and now there, the, most communities have established an OPEB trust fund where assets are going in, amounts are being appropriated each year. So that over time, there will be a chunk of assets to offset this liability. Obviously, in a perfect world, over time, this will also be fully funded and the liability will come down. Um, you've got, as you can see, as of 2020, a $31.5 million liability and a 1.85, um, trust fund. Last year, someone had asked me, um, how that related to the, to the town, to the other towns. The state really doesn't give out a lot of information, but they, um, based on what I could find out, funding-wise, you were in the top half of Massachusetts communities. I know that doesn't give you a lot. But the, it's better, you know, it's better than some, it's not as good as others. But you definitely have made a commitment to putting money in the budget and appropriating it to the OPEB trust fund so that some resources are being accumulated over time. Um, you know, there's been talk at some towns that, you know, you'll put in what you can. And then maybe if indeed the pension liability goes away in 15 years, that the money, that, that extra money that was going to the regional systems to address the unfunded liability piece, maybe could go into OPEB. You know, it's a long way off, but that's been some of the talk. So that's a very quick and dirty, um, disjointed because of the technological problem overview of, of the year.
Marty, can I just ask a question on that slide?
Sure. On the last one, sure. And then we're, we're gonna go around to Chelsea, just so.
Okay. Um, this is specifically for that one. So, um, Bill, nice to meet you. Um, um, the newest member on the board, so I appreciate the overview here. When you say that Southborough was in the top half of, um, OPEB, do you mean the, in terms of the amount that we have in the trust?
Yes.
Or do you mean the amount that we're putting in every year?
Um, the amount that you have in the trust, like I said, there really, I wish there was a good database. Um, at the time, I couldn't find it, but your, your actuary, the person who you hired to do the actuarial study does a lot of communities in the state. So I actually asked him, um, for the information and he just came, you know, it was very vague and very broad, but the bottom line was, you know, from comparing your, your unfunded liability to your trust fund, you were in the top 10. You know, you could have a 1.8 million and if you're a big city with a $300 million liability, it's very different. Um, so I think it was more the relationship between your liability and your, and your trust fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Marty, could I ask another question about this one?
Yeah, Sam, I, I think what I'm gonna, about this particular slide?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
Quick one. Bill, good to see you again. Uh, I have a question that, uh, may not be a question that you can answer. But as I look at the OPEB trust fund growth relative to what we're putting in each year, I gotta wonder what they're investing this stuff in because in fact, it looks like they're putting it in CDs at a half percent annual interest kind of thing here, given that the stock market has been going crazy over the last several years. What, what are they investing this stuff in to get such a pitiful return on it?
Yeah. So I, Brian can maybe address that, but I will say that the, you know, these are assets that in all likelihood, you know, you will not be touching for the long term. So your investment portfolio has a long-term investment strategy, which has long-term, not short-term, long-term rates of return assumptions. I believe, Brian, that you're in Bartholomew for this.
Correct.
And I think it is a, um, you know, it's a very portfolio of bonds and stocks and uh, various other things and money market funds, mutual funds, whatever. But the goal here is not to worry about taking a hit in one year because it's not money that you are gonna be tapping. Now, yes, nobody can predict, even over the long term, will things behave like they've always behaved? You know, we don't, we don't know that. But there's two issues here. One is you could put it all in a bank. You could put it all in an extremely safe, low rate of return set of investments. The sort of irony is that if you do that, the rate of return that the actuary can project in their study is much lower and it's gonna drive your liability up. Like doing nothing except changing what it's invested in. Like doing nothing except changing what it's invested in. So I I presume, Brian, I don't know how the investment decisions for OPEB get made, if that's just your office or if there's an investment committee. Um, but you're not doing anything different than most towns. I do have one uh town. That has it in a, you know, in in a, I don't think it's a bank account. It might be an MMDT. Getting clobbered because the the long term interest rate that the actuary uses to project the liability is so low. That it drives the liability itself up a lot more than would be.
Yeah, just very disappointing return there, but we may not have much control over that. Thank you.
All right, um, Bill, we're gonna um um. Go around our roundtable here and see if on any of these there are um questions that that folks have or items that uh information they haven't touched on. So Lisa, why don't we start with you? All right, I'll come back. What? Nope, there we go.
Sorry, had to step away for two seconds. Um. So basically, Bill, I I. Have one, just one. Major question for you. So i- in in looking at all of this. Where do you think we should be putting our focus on as we potentially look ahead to? Um, even the next two years, um, based on what you're seeing and the trends?
Okay, um, I mean, I, you know, I think you all are doing a good job at prioritizing your definitely, you know, trying to get money into OPEB. You're continuing to invest in your fixed assets beyond the big projects that are being borrowed under the debt exclusion. You know, again, this is from my perspective, you know, I'm not, I'm I'm not a resident, uh, you don't pay taxes in your town, but. You you know, your stabilization fund is low. There's no, there's no getting around that for a budget your size um. To have a stabilization fund with six hundred thousand. And uh, you know, a budget in the mid fifty million, probably soon to be sixty in a couple of years. You know, that's low. Um, again, I'm just comparing it to what I see out there. Um, so. You know, can you finesse some money there for a long term strategy of getting that a little higher? So you're closer to that eight to twelve percent range of reserves? Um, as you know, it all comes down to the priorities and there's always a lot of them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Chelsea.
Thank you. Um. Bill, so I understand there's different levels of an audit. Um, and can you? Are there any areas of an audit that you think that we should be looking at that um we currently don't engage with you now on?
Um. No, I'm I'm not saying this to pander, but you know, you're one of the communities that. Knock on wood, I I don't worry about a lot. You know, you've had the luxury of having a. Um, a good staff, key financial management staff for the last. Number of years. I mean, I know Heidi retired and Carla is here now, but Carla was here before and is a known entity. Um. So. You know, we, when we do an audit, our primary objective is to certify the financial statement, certify the numbers. Um, but if we see anything that's materially. Uh, a concern either from. Legal compliance perspective or internal control perspective. Then we would have to identify that and there's sort of three levels of that. There's material weaknesses, reportable conditions, and then kind of other matters and the other matters of the. Sort of little, you know, nitty gritty things. So there's a couple of comments in your management letter, which I consider to be those other matters. We did not find anything. That would would have been uh identified anywhere close to being either a material weakness or a reportable condition. Um, so that's a good thing. I mean, I wouldn't do it personally as your auditor, but. You know, some communities have had the bureau come in and do some sort of a management audit. Sometimes I think a lot of that gets to be very boiler boilerplate. But they're usually driven by certain concerns and. From my perspective as the auditor. There's nothing that would, you know, would say to me, gee, maybe this needs to be looked at.
Thank you, and I just have one more question. Um, we're gonna have a discussion later on in this meeting about some payroll accruals that. Um, changed after year end last year. Um, can you kind of explain how you assess? If anything needs to be updated based on um new information?
I mean, I'm I'm not sure I'm a hundred percent familiar with what you're saying, what you're referring to, so I don't know if I could. I mean, payroll accruals being wrong or?
She's talking about the vacation and and sick time. Um, you know, the balances that we bring over. For long term liabilities.
Yeah, um. You're bringing them, Brian, into your. System or were they already in your system?
Yeah, we have, we have all of them except historically, the fire department in particular was not in our system. And we found out, I I think I may have mentioned this to you in late fall, but we found out that some of them were a little. Um, you know, the balances weren't quite accurate, so I think that's what Chelsea's asking is how you, how you sort of work through that.
I mean, I think the more, the more you can centralize this, this is. And I'm not just referring to Southborough, it's so much better than it used to be because really a lot of departments were kind of on their own. And as the payroll personnel software has improved, a lot of that stuff has been centralized. So I think to the extent that that can be centralized, that is, you know, that is better. Um, I'm sorry, Brian and I did go over all this with twenty audits in my head. I'm. I forget from place, but. You know, obviously, you don't, you don't want to see that happen, but. I think the the least amount of problems I've seen over the years are the places that have it centralized through the treasurer's office and the payroll personnel system. I I know I'm sounding old, but in the old days, there was a resistance. You may wonder why, you know, from some departments to turn over that information. I'm not referring to Southborough at all, I'm just in general referring to that. So as towns have moved to that centralized tracking of that stuff, it's become a lot better. It's a lot less of an issue than it used to be back in the day.
Okay, so did, so was there a change to our liability with the updated information?
Um, I don't think it was significant. Brian, do you remember?
Yeah, it was, it was, I think we went over it and it was, you you were just about to close the audit and we just couldn't get the number in time and. The potential number wasn't, didn't rise to a material. You know, material change.
And this is one of those, you know, kind of like OPEB and. Pension, but a lot smaller. This is one of those long term liabilities, you know, there would be much more of a concern if the payroll accrual. For the end of two thousand twenty was done wrong. Not that this shouldn't, you know, should be, shouldn't be uh correct, but. Those long term liabilities are are the numbers Gatsby requires you to gather. And I think when Brian and I went through this. Without anything in front of me, we determined that the impact on the financial statements, it wouldn't. You know, whether the number was what it was or what it potentially could be, wouldn't. Change anybody's view of what the financial statements looked like. Um, so we deferred that to next till to next year.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, Brian Shea.
Thank you, Bill. Very uh thorough presentation, good report, and I don't have any additional questions.
All right, Brian, thanks. And Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. Um, thank you, Bill. Um, while you are getting repowered up, uh, we had a brief conversation about the management letter. And I guess my question for you is, uh. Given the contents there, it sounds like the items that you identified are lower priority for concern. And uh, I'd point out there are some of them that are repeat from prior years. Is there anything on there that uh? You're beginning to get concerned about to say, you folks really ought to uh deal with this, although. You know, there's not urgent pressure on it. It's been lingering and uh there's reasonable value in actually addressing it. Anything lies to that level?
Um, I would, the the quick answer is no. Um, you know, the, there's a couple of. Or one, I guess, so two. The first two are the boilerplate ones that are in pretty much every management letter I write. Um, because there's just certain risks operating in a municipal environment with multiple departments that. You know, we need to point out. I've said this before and again, not to pander, but. I have management letters that have twenty something comments. Um, and they've had them for years. So I will say when things have popped up in the past, for the most part, those things have been addressed. I mean, there may be some other firms that would look at these comments and say, oh, I probably just mentioned this verbally. Um, you know, I like to have things in there, not just to to say, oh, look, we we saw this, but um. I know that the, a couple of the comments about the budgetary, um, you know, the bond premium and the and the deficit. Those were hopefully one time things. Um, you know, I I wouldn't expect after talking to the staff. That something like that would happen again. They, there was that transition of water from the normal department to the enterprise fund and there's, there's a number of new things that. Um, I think people maybe weren't aware of or were needed to be prepared for. And um, on the bond premium, those are kind of unusual things and the state continues to change the regulations, which sometimes. Makes it difficult to keep up with. The Municipal Modernization Act changed some of the requirements of what to do with the bond premium, supposedly in the interest of. Uh, making it simpler and I think it made it a little more complicated, so. I don't feel those things will be repeated in the future and the boilerplate ones, you know, they're. You may, you may say I'm just putting it in there to protect myself, but um, you know, there's just general. Internal control, environmental issues in the municipal environment that require, in my opinion, to put those in there. The policies and procedures manual, yeah, that would be nice to get on the agenda if it can get to the top of the of the list for people. Um, you know, it's not a small undertaking. Uh, and I'm not saying that. In order to say, you know, hire me to do it because I wouldn't do it as the auditor, I wouldn't get involved in you, you know, the decisions that have to be made. It would be a conflict. But that may be something that at some point would be nice to get on higher up on the list.
Okay, so nothing, though, that's sort of approaching the red zone in terms of moving.
No, 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 there's nothing in here. Like I said, these are the third, you know, the lowest level. And I honestly believe there are probably a couple of things in here that, you know, another firm might say, I I don't, I don't know that we needed to put that in, but. I just like to keep people aware of what's happening.
Okay, thanks. And a quick comment about the stabilization fund. Uh, four of the five of us actually have been on the uh. Advisory Committee in the past, and there's a long history of discussion, active discussion about the size of that advisory that's pressed for. Smaller stabilization fund over the years and so that's uh, that's not an accident and it's ongoing discussion, I think, and so I think we're pretty sensitive to the. Risk there and uh.
Yeah, and it and it was, there was a period. Where there were before Brian, where there were some significant issues. You should go back and read the management orders in those days. Um, it is in the treasurer's office, which meant information was coming out very late, which meant, you know. Money was being accumulated that wouldn't have normally been accumulated, so. There are definitely valid reasons that there was that reaction to the size of those reserves. I don't know what you hit as a total. I, it wouldn't surprise me if at one point those, you know, where you're at five percent now, you were up at twenty percent at one point. Um, there was definitely a reason and a rationale for saying, look, we need to get these down, but they really got drawn down and it was a conscious decision, you know.
Ongoing discussion and.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman. I I just, I just had one comment to to Sam's point. Um, I see Mr. Malinowski is still sitting in the attendees room, but to avoid pulling him back over. Um, just a plug for the the capital planning committee and also um for uh Mr. Ballentine. There has been discussion about uh discussing a capital stabilization fund to try to um integrate with the capital plan that the committee is putting together. Those discussions are very much in their infancy, but um I do want to point that out. I suppose the bad news is, is we've only put. You know, a little under ninety thousand dollars into the stabiliz- stabilization fund in the eight plus years I've been here. The good news is we haven't taken anything out of it. So um, you know, and maybe that changes this year, who knows, but but I think that um, you know, it it, um, the one thing that has helped us in terms of our. Our bond rating review is that we have had, um, we've had a significant amount of unused levy capacity, which we've convinced the bonding, uh, the rating agencies. To look at as available funds in conjunction with with our stabilization in our OPEB.
Good point. Thanks, Mark.
Um, Bill, thank you very much. Um, that was a good preemptive strike by Mr. Stivers about the uh stabilization fund. Um, and so this is, this is not the year to be talking about um increasing the amounts, but I, but I was on, I was on the higher side of that argument. And uh, obviously I lost it.
And I was on the lower side.
Um, but Bill, thank you very much. Um, and I, it doesn't sound like we have any other uh um questions or comments. So I think we are going to uh let you have the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Take care. Bye, bye.
And Brian, I'm correct that you don't have anything else to add on the uh, on the budget side of things. Hopefully, um. Uh, I think we should probably honestly, um, you know, for the next few months, just have this as a standing item. Um, on our agendas, just. Um, because things are are moving, you're getting information about the um, the inquiry we're sending to the various depart, the larger departments anyway. Um, does that make sense to you to be able to do a uh, an every other week update for us?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I think it makes sense.
Okay. Um, all right. Next, we are going to reports.
Marty, can I just make a suggestion? Um. Because I think we have a few department head items in the other matters. If we can just maybe go out of order, just so that they're. I I think our reports will take a while to get through.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just, well, I'm just saying it's. Getting late um for them to be on.
Yeah, let me take a quick look and he. All right, we have. Um, the chief and Matt Probst. I think Ryan is just trolling us. Um, that he disappeared. So I'm fine. That's a good idea, um, Chelsea. So why don't we? I think, well, we'll, we'll see how long, how much the discussion is about the survey document, but I don't think the uh, the item involving Chief Achilles will be terribly long. So why don't we go to item seven A? And Chief, you can thank Chelsea Malinowski for getting you out of here early. Hey, Chief.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
All right, so we've got your your um uh scaled down or narrowed, whatever you want to call it, um. Proposal just having to do with the call firefighters, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, we talked about it a little bit last time, um, although the other topic dominated. Um, it strikes me as pretty straightforward. Um. Are there? Any questions? I'll go, Lisa says no. Chelsea says no, Sam says no, and Brian says no. Boy, Chief, we are gonna get you out of here quickly. So is there a motion?
Also move. Approve it.
Second. To approve, okay, fair enough. To approve the 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 modifications requested by the chief?
Yes.
Okay, and it was seconded by Mr. Shea. Uh, discussion on Ms. Braccio. Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mr. Shea.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
And Mr. Healy is I, approved, chief. And again, you can thank Ms. Malinowski for getting you out of here and time to watch whatever it is coming up on television.
I appreciate you guys have a safe night and thank you very much.
All right, take care, chief. Um, and now uh going down, I think we have an item with Matt Probst that is item seven E. Why don't we bring Matt over? Hi, Matt, how are you?
Great, thanks.
Um, this is a lot of work that you guys have put in.
Uh, we've been mulling on it for about a year now, so it's, honestly, a lot of it is copied as I possibly mentioned in the note. From other survey tools that other cities have done, so.
Okay, that was gonna be my, one of my questions. That was, there was, there was a, there was a template or at least um, you didn't completely reinvent the wheel with. Okay, that was going to be my, one of my questions. That was, there was, there was a, there was a template, or at least um, you didn't completely reinvent the wheel with this guy again.
No.
Very extensive.
Yeah, the intention was actually to make use of what other other cities have done. Um, it's because obviously good survey design requires quite a bit of thought and planning, and there's a lot of psychology and the word you word the questions and so forth. So we basically had, basically leveraged uh, questions from other other cities, so that was the goal.
My my main thing, and then then we'll, we'll go around and Chelsea, I'm going to start with you. Um, but my main question is, there there have been a lot of surveys in Southborough over the years. And I think the same 172 people respond to those surveys. Um, what sort of thought have you folks, I'm sure you've given it a lot, um, have given to, first of all, how is the distribution going to take place? And how are you going to get that number way above 172?
Uh, that's a great question. So the goal is to, um, well, first of all, surveys are wonderful. Uh, we know that it it can, many different departments can continue and well, they have been doing their own surveys. Um, the goal here is to stop, uh, basically to use uh, uniformity and use uh, the basically multiple departments intending to do their own survey, just join this together, because there is a lot of redundancy in the surveys. And there's, there's a lot of overlap between the the basic questions about things like background of the individual filling it out, et cetera. And I think this is going to be a training, it'll be certainly a training exercise for us and the citizens to get into uh, the standard uh, way of working of periodic uh, periodically filling out surveys. Um, and the more the different departments can promote the same survey, the more likely it will be that I feel the citizens will fill it out. So rather than just bringing, this is the survey for this department or for this committee, et cetera. This is a simply a uniform uh, survey that we can sort of all jump on the same bandwagon, all promote it. Uh, I'm not saying it's going to be necessarily great um, response. I think it will take time to show the utility of it, especially to town to town citizens. Um, and but it's going to be fairly low cost. It's all going to be all online. Um, and you know, I have talked to um, the Public Works about possibly promoting it for the the promotion period uh, at the transfer station. So the idea is we promote it at the town website, promote it at the transfer station on possibly the the billboard. And you know, my Southborough and any other uh, social media. And one of the benefits here, of course, we're asking questions of the residents, what are the best ways of engaging them? So for the future, hopefully we'll have better understanding of, you know, do Southborough residents prefer Facebook or Twitter, et cetera? Which will give us uh, better uh, understanding of the mode or means of asking for subsequent surveys to them.
Great, so you guys have thought about it. Um, all right, Chelsea.
Thanks, Matt. Um, I think this is a great start to putting a survey together. I had a few um, questions and comments. Um, I think it's pretty long. Um, and I just don't know if people are going to take the time to fill all of this out. I think um, I think there's some on here that maybe don't need to be on here for the purposes of what you're trying to gather. Um, so I'd be curious to see if you'd be open to um, feedback on removing some of these. Um, the other, the other thing is, um, I I read your memo about doing it twice a year. I think that's um, ambitious to, to do this lengthy survey twice a year. I think that's a lot for your committee to kind of go through all of the data on it. And I think it's a lot to market it to get people to do it twice a year. So um, those two things. And then um, I think that there were some items that I that I thought, oh, I think, you know, capital and or advisory should be kind of weighing in on these questions. So I know that you had some department heads look at them. Um, but did you also reach out to advisory and capital?
Okay, um, answered that last question, I have not reached out to advisory capital, but I would love to reach into them, I will.
Okay.
Um. And uh, absolutely, uh, we love feedback. Uh, the pure nature of the survey is to get feedback. So uh, if there's questions, we feel like we can simplify, make it more likely that people will fill it out, incentivize them, absolutely. Um, love to get uh, learn about the specific questions you think we can shrink down or eliminate, et cetera. In terms of the frequency, um, this was copied, I think, off of uh, I think it was Kansas City or it's, you know, basically another, another town that has has been doing this, and actually quite a few other towns that are uh, getting into this. And they do it quarterly. Um, granted, they 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 invest a lot of money into it. And they, I think they may send out mailings, et cetera, and they sam- do a large sample size. Um, so it's not necessarily all residents every quarter, but I knew, do know they, I think they re- they rotate through fairly frequently. Um, um, I think that um, it's it's something we can certainly discuss, at least a minimum of a year. Um, but I thought if we could get two data points a year, one before town meeting and one uh, before the fall budgeting cycle, that gives us a lot of useful information. Um, so, but of course, it it needs to be weighed against actually getting, you know, getting the information. And are we disincentivizing? Or people, will people experience survey fatigue uh, if we're sending too many surveys?
Well, and and I guess if you just look at the budget cycle that we go through, so we start, and and Brian and Mark probably start before we even get into it, right, in October, and now we're pushing town meeting out, and so now we're, we've elongated that process. So really, what are, it it, I guess in this cycle, really, what are you looking to gain by doing it twice a year? I I I just would be, I think you're being a little um, too ambitious, maybe. Um, and if you start with once a year and then decide that you want to do, that that would be my suggestion, but.
Okay, that's just. Yeah, we we could, we can certainly do that. One of the things that is pushing us for this first cycle, one of the reasons why I would like to get it out uh, towards the end of February is we're working with Youth and Family Services. They had uh, budgeted, they're working with a consultant, and they actually were planning to do their own survey to all town citizens. And I said, well, why don't we just combine forces? If you're doing your own survey, let's just merge your questions into the this, and let's just get it out there. And so there again, I feel like uh, we'd get a lot of departments doing their periodic surveys. I'd rather join forces and just put together a uniform survey, but uh, fully open to uh, if that's, yeah.
I mean, I think that makes sense to join forces, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Brian.
Thanks. Uh, so Matt, very, very thorough, very comprehensive, and happy to hear that you've, you know, really utilized surveys from other communities as well, rather than reinventing the wheel on this. But the question I had was similar to uh, the point that Chelsea had just made as well, was if the frequency with which you would be sending this out is also consistent with what other communities have. Um, so I guess with the number of questions that are on here, I I think I share the concern about survey fatigue, uh, trying to do it multiple times in a year, particularly in this community where there's probably a low level of turnover, all told. Maybe much less than, you know, a larger city like Kansas City or something like that. So I think, you know, once people get it a couple of times, it's like, oh my gosh, nothing's changed. Do I need to go through this again? So so those are just thoughts that I had, and we can continue discussions on that.
Yeah, that makes sense. And like, like I say, um, the goal is to test and learn. So if it's more conservative to test uh, at a lower frequency, um, and then then increase if we get a uh, good response rate, we can certainly do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Sam.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Matt. Uh, I'd like to start with kudos to the Technology Committee. I think we've got a great group there. This is a great process. And one of several uh, very useful things that they're working on. So uh, great work and keep it up. Uh, I agree with the concerns about the length of the survey. On the other hand, um, I think it's worth uh, starting broad and maybe trying to figure out, are there parts of it that people just aren't interested in, don't answer, et cetera? Uh, because you don't find that out unless you start fairly broad with it. Um, so I'd be uh, in favor of uh, keeping it broad for the first time at least, see what happens. Uh, there was conversation at the last Technology Committee meeting about maybe a streamlined version for people who at the front end didn't want to do the whole thing somehow. I think that's an interesting concept that might be worth uh, pursuing to give somebody an option. If you've got 10 minutes, here's what we'd like to find out, but if you're willing to do more, uh, there's a lot of useful input that you could provide for the town. Um, to Marty's point about the 172 uh, frequent flyers on the process, uh, we, in our history, there have been several surveys. EDC did some surveys recently, for example, and I took a look at it. I think statistically, if you can get up to three or 400, you begin to approach a number that has some statistical significance in terms of results for it. So it's a surprisingly small number. And I think there's a good chance we could probably approach that at least from this with the appropriate publicity. And in terms of the frequency, uh, I'm, I guess, more interested in taking one step at a time. I like, let's do it once, see what happens, and if it's reasonably successful, then we can think about a more, you know, frequent process. If it's uh, you know, not too successful, we step back and rethink, and do we reframe it? Do we reduce the size, et cetera, target it more precisely? And in terms of the uh, the repeat process, I don't know, Matt, if you guys, I haven't heard you talk about the ability for somebody to uh, save their response, and the second time through, they can recall what they responded to last time and do sort of an update on it, as opposed to having to go through and uh, re-answer all the questions potentially. I've seen surveys structured that way as well. So you can put an ID number or something on it, so people can recall their prior version and try again on it. But again, overall, I think it's a great idea, it makes a lot of sense to consolidate a lot of survey work and include areas that have not been surveyed historically, uh, to see what kind of feedback we're getting from other people. So again, great idea. I encourage to move forward with it. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Great. Hi, Matt, thank you. I'm very impressed with the amount of work and time that you guys have put into this. Um, I I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I I echo the comments that were made here. I guess it's the drawback of going last. Um, one of the the things I did want to say, though, is I noticed that you had put uh, for the second um, time period to do this is in August. And August typically, I'm sure you're aware, in Southborough, non-COVID time is a tough month. A lot of families are just getting in their last bits of vacation, and I don't know how tuned in they actually are. So if you were going to do it um, semi-annually, you may want to reconsider August. I think summer's really tough to get any type of feedback. Um. I I found as I was going through here, that there was a lot of overlap with with the master plan did their survey. So that's just um, a a comment on that. I do also think it's a little bit long. Um, and I also agree that that capital should review. Um, can I ask a couple of specific questions to different slides, Matt? That, um, as I was going through it, if you don't mind?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and so on page five, which is the emergency services, under the the police services. And page six, there's a comment box on page six, but not on page five. And I think it leads to a little bit of confusion. I understand you're trying to do a comment on both, but I think it may get lost in translation that that somebody may just give you a comment on the fire and emergency medical services, and where they might have commented on police. Are you seeing where I'm referencing? It's listed as page five on mine, sorry. It's under emergency services. I have it as page five. Maybe it's.
Yes.
Okay, so there's, there's, it gives you the priority boxes, but it doesn't give a comment box.
Give a comment box for police.
Right, and I, and I see that you tried to combine them based on the wording on the next page, but I I just.
To be clear, by the way, this is a PDF export of the actual survey tool. The way this is going to appear in the survey tool is this, this is actually all on one page.
Okay.
It's all listed under emergency uh, services and uh, police and fire, effectively, police and fire are combined. Um, I can definitely uh, go back to uh, the police uh, fire chiefs to see if they'd like to split out uh, those comment, that comment box separately.
Yeah, I mean, I just worry, Matt, that somebody might want to have a comment on police, and then they'll see it where it's kind of listed under fire, and it might lead to a little bit of confusion, that's all.
Yeah, good, good point.
Some of the other comments, I know that there was um, like on library at listed facilities, and I think again, capital. Um, capital would be, if they reviewed it, that would take care of that. Um, I'm just trying to see, I think those were the, that was one of the major ones that jumped out. The rest, I think, were more capital related to um, where they were. But it, but again, great job. It clearly shows how much time and energy you guys have put into this. Um, and I'd certainly be interested um, in helping come out this as it goes forward as well. So thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Yeah, so the general theme here, like I've heard from several uh, committee members is, let's start, start small, start simple, possibly with one per year. Uh, if we did go to two per year, uh, love uh, Lisa, your thoughts about probably shouldn't be August, maybe September. But let's start with one per year. Let's see how it goes uh, at this year, like end of February in a few weeks, and then uh, learn from that and uh, go from there.
Um, Matt, I'm going to be very quick. The, I I am assuming that that what will happen is the survey goes out, and then at some point after that, whatever the timeframe is, there'll be a report about the survey. So the, that that folks will have the opportunity to see, here's the, I have no idea what the answer to this is. I don't know if the, if the right way to build an audience, if you will, over time, is to do it once a year or to do it with more regularity. In other words, are you more likely to draw in an additional 15 people if there's a one year gap, or are you more likely to draw in 15 people or whatever the number is? I'm not a marketing person. I, I'm sure, my guess is there's tons of them in Southborough. And there might be a relatively easy answer to that question. I mean, really, in some respects, you're building a brand. And what's the, what's the best way to go about doing it? So that's just a comment. Um, the second thing is, are those your books?
Uh, no, virtual backgrounds.
I was going to be incredibly impressed with your old book collection, so.
Weird.
All right. Hey, great work, and we're going to see you on the 16th, right, with, I think your new member is doing a, uh, the new member, the uh, the committee has been working on an initiative we're going to hear about on the 16th, correct?
Yeah, that's the Strategic Tech Plan. So we're up, refreshing, do significantly to their strategic, five-year strategic technology plan, which the Municipal Technology Committee maintains. And we'd definitely love to get your thoughts on that as well.
All right, well, we'll see you on the 16th then.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
All right, you too.
I I think. I think we are done with um, department heads who have items on the agenda.
So I, I think Brian, I'm guessing Brian's on for something.
No, I think he trolls us.
Yeah, no, that's Ryan, not Brian.
Brian, I'm sorry, Brian.
Brian, yeah, Brian and and Melissa Danz are both here for discussion of the shared position. So I, and I understand that may be a little bit of a longer discussion, but.
Um, you know, I think we'll get, I I don't think the the reports, um. Well, I guess, no, we are farther down, are we? Um, you know, I'd like to get through the reports first, though. I don't think they're going to be that long, hopefully. Um, so let's go to the 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 um, reports, because I think you're right, Mark, that could be a little bit longer um, um, discussion. So I've got three. Um, um, the MWR TA is, again, I'll keep reminding people, that's the one where all four of you took a step back, and I didn't move quickly enough, and ended up being the representative. That being said, it it's, it's a, I I've, there's been one meeting, and I guess a couple of observations. Number one, it's a pretty expansive outfit. Um, not surprisingly, a lot of it's, again, Metro West Regional Transit Association. Most of its um, most of its resources and most of its routes are geared towards larger communities right now. And that, you know, Framingham is in Marlboro, um, but also, you know, some places that have some similarities with Southborough, Lake Natick and Sudbury, um, and alike. And so I guess a couple of things. Number one, it it's a, it's a sprawling network. A lot of it is focused on shopping areas, whether it's the the malls or grocery stores. And from a south, and it's only got, Southborough's got one route, um, and it's got a stop in downtown Southborough. And it's sort of, a a couple of things struck me, and it's, this is for a discussion down the line, I'm going to put it on. But for instance, it doesn't stop at um, uh, any of the the um, the senior housing. It doesn't, you know, stop on on Marlboro Road at uh, at the manor there. Um, and there aren't routes. And there aren't routes for Southborough that are targeted towards, you know, stop-in shops or the malls or things like that. And it just strikes me that regional transit, for the most part, is gonna be geared towards folks who, for whatever reason, either are not comfortable, aren't able to, whatever, drive. And right now, that the MWR TA does not have a focus in Southborough towards seniors and the disabled and the like. And I think that's something for us to think about. That's number one. Number two is they've got an initiative coming that kind of is, it's, it's, it's a, it's a side of a similar coin in some respects. One of their initiatives is, they haven't started in Southborough now, is almost like a Lyft or Uber program that is subsidized by the, by the state and is focused for, you know, potential customers that would otherwise might be using mass transit, but it's a point-to-point system. And they're trying it out in a couple of communities right now. Southborough is not one of the, the pilot communities. But again, just for, think, something to think about down the line, there's, again, we're, we're only 10,000 people, you know, we're for the most part, you know, a, a, you know, an on-the-move community with, with, with cars and the like. But there's a decent segment of the population, I think, that could take better advantage of MWR TA resources than we're giving them the opportunity right now. So that's my little spiel about that. The open meeting law policy, thanks to Mr. Shea and others who weighed in with some suggestions. I'd like to, if possible, get this signed off on tonight, because I keep checking those agendas, and there are still, you know, a handful of, of boards and committees that have just the report, whether it's from a department head or somebody. And I'd like to, you know, try to nip that in the bud. So any substantive comments about the, the additions or it overall?
So could I just ask a question on your note?
Yes.
So you don't want to keep in the last sentence, right? So my, my only question about that is, let's say that something comes up that you need to have an emergency meeting within 24, sorry, 48 hours of notification. Does that get complicated by, by taking that out of there? Like, like if it, if it's not an amendment to an agenda, but it's actually a meeting that needs to happen?
Yeah, again, and this is, I alluded to this last time, it becomes, it, it... The reason I put that note in there is because I tried a number of different ways to deal with it that didn't
Yeah.
beg any number of additional questions. So I guess it just strikes me as a pretty narrow category. And trying to address it, you know, for that very, very narrow category, to have a whole paragraph that honestly, I think is gonna suggest additional questions along the lines that you're referencing. So that's why I put it in there, but that's why I put the note saying, I don't want to do it, so.
Okay.
I agree with not including that sentence. You know, I just think unfortunate, well, I think there's the potential that someone's gonna say, and it's like, ah, this gives us the out so that we can address this. And I really would much rather not. Again, having said that, in my time on this board, I think we've had one emergency meeting. And that was the night before we hit to close the townhouse as part of the pandemic. And we had one emergency meeting, I think we scheduled it for a Sunday night. I just think it's so rare that something so drastic comes up that it can't wait for that 48-hour posting period. I just don't think that... I think putting it in there is just gonna raise too much of a potential that it could get a board or a committee in trouble. And there's a lot of people out there looking to get boards and committees in trouble, and let's not give them that ammunition, is my opinion.
Anyone else?
I don't, I don't feel strongly either way. I'm happy with the note. I could live without it.
Same here.
Okay, all right. So with that sentence not included, I move to approve this communication to our boards and committees about the recent, not changes, but the recent commentary about the open meeting law by the Attorney General.
Can I just ask a question, Marty?
Yep.
Can, can we actually vote on something under report? Or does it have to be, and again, this is a...
I think we can.
A process. I mean, I don't know. That's what I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think we can. I, I mean, there's, there's notice of the fact, I mean, in a weird way, that's why the AG said you had to have these things on, because there might be a vote, or there might be, you know, a substantive discussion.
Okay, I just thought I would ask.
And a practical matter, honestly, I don't even think we need a vote on this. I think we can just determine that, you know, having, having reviewed this, that we now leave it to the town administrator to communicate with the boards and committees. I don't think, it's not, it's not a policy. It's a communication to advise them of the, the, the recommended approach to the new open meeting law dictates. Yeah, Mark?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, it says from, to be, to be determined. Did we just determine that? It's gonna come from me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let you just check it.
Congratulations.
All right, so I withdraw my motion. And even though I'm pretty comfortable with the fact that, again, I think, again, if that's not what the Attorney General was trying to say, that, that because you might be voting on something, or you might be having, then I'm not sure what they're saying. So, all right, and what's my... And the third thing is just, oh, very quickly, the, the legislation that, that had been lingering for a while, the economic development legislation, there's two things. Number one was, was reported today. I saw it in my Southborough. The $250 shall be expended for costs related to a wastewater treatment facility in the town of Southborough. So I'm not sure if that's money in the bank, but it's at least, it's, it's at least in a bill that was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. And so I, I guess kudos to Representative Dykma for following up on that and getting it in there. But we should keep pressing on that. That'd be an interesting, I mean, that's obviously been one of the issues in thinking about downtown development, that wastewater treatment is a big deal.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, that was something that was, that Representative Dykma had included in a capital bond bill and passed by the legislature. Now that capital bond bill, all those millions of dollars worth of projects comes under the purview of the governor to release when he finds funding available for those things. Representative Dykma says only about 30% of those projects ever get released. So again, you know, when we're ready and we want, we're ready to make a push, then, then I think we can see about trying to get the governor to release some of those funds.
Okay. And, and then the, the only other thing is, is there is an item in there providing $75,000, it's not for us, but it was $75,000 to the town of Hudson for a pilot commuter shuttle service linking employees to the Southborough commuter rail, because it makes stops in employment hubs such as Boston, Western and Framingham. And again, just something to think about, and in conjunction, I, is, yeah, Marika's still there, sort of in conjunction with discussions with the EDC. I don't think there is a, a commuter shuttle service from the train station along Route 9. And that might be something that would be worth exploring. So Hudson got $75,000, again, same 30% chance of them ever getting it. It's better than zero, I suppose. But anyway, just wanted to flag that, that, that the state is at least thinking about shuttle services from train stations in terms of economic development. That is it for me.
Marty?
Yes.
Could I ask a question about that?
Yep.
Another item in that bill was related to the housing choice issue. And part of that requires towns to have at least one zoning district where multifamily housing is by right.
Yep.
And I'm not sure that we qualify at this point. I don't remember. I didn't go back and look, but that would be a good one for town council to, like, look at, make sure we qualify. And if we don't, to figure out what we need to do to get in compliance.
I think it's pretty clear. I mean, it has to be within a half mile of the train station.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I, I mean, I, I think, and, and part of, there are a number of other things that we've been talking about that may tie into that. But, but clearly, and there are penalties if, if towns don't come up with a zoning district like that. I'm pretty sure we don't have one right now within a half mile of the train station.
Yeah, it's gonna be useful to get underway ASAP if we could start figuring out what we're gonna do about that.
Agreed. All right, members' reports. Brian, you want to talk quickly about our great adventure with our office hours?
Sure. So we had office hours last week. We had two attendees over the hour. One relatively new resident to town, lives on Lover's Lane, as I recall. Got into some good discussions with him about, who's curious on an update on the Park Central matter. We had a good discussion on continued use of Zoom for public meetings going into the future. He had also a discussion on the DPW, and he had expressed interest in a recycle-only permit, really more for yard waste, being able to use the transfer station for yard waste. And Ms. Reynolds joined us as well. And got into a good discussion on strategies for promoting the upcoming downtown initiative and, you know, ways that we can get the word out ahead of town meeting so that people show up at town meeting, understanding of the proposal, and, and prepared, hopefully, to vote in favor of it.
All right, and the only other thing I'll add on office hours is that next week, I believe it's gonna be Ms. Brascio and Ms. Malinowski.
So that's one question that I had. I know that next Tuesday is also the, and Mr. Purple is gonna address this, the Accelerate 8 program. And I don't know if we want to hold the office hours and compete with people also potentially attending the MassDOT presentation on the upcoming bridge replacement project.
I'd like not to skip a week. Lisa and Chelsea, do you want to skip, put it on a different night? Do it on Wednesday or something?
I think advisory is meeting on Wednesday.
The Accelerate meeting is at 6:00, Brian. I don't know. I mean, I think the office hours have been starting at 7:30.
Yep.
Yeah, so I would think, you know, how long they can hold people's interest on that subject, there is Q and A. But if you start them at 7:30, I think that, you know, the crowd can then move over to office hours.
And Lisa, you said you thought there were some people who were, who had reached out to you and were lined up to... So why don't we, I hear you, Brian. Why don't we, why don't we do it at 7:30 and, and roll the dice that we don't get too much overlap?
And Marty, I've attended a couple of those Accelerate meetings by Mastot, and they didn't last more than an hour and a half.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's just leave it at that. Leave it at next Tuesday, and Ms. Brascio and Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you.
All right, next up, is this you, Lisa, the MMA Annual Meeting Workshop update?
So I, I think it's me and anyone that may have attended one of the workshops, Marty. I just, I'll keep this brief. One of the workshops that I had attended through the MMA was about economic development. And there were just a couple key points that I wanted to be able to share with the board. They focused a lot on vacancies. And one of the key points was that the key in building class rents vacancy and risk is, it's expected that next year will begin the suburban sprawl with large offices maintaining a small downtown presence and opening offices in the suburbs surrounding downtown to allow for lower density as well as easier parking and commutes. So I, I thought that was interesting as you, as they talked about the sprawl and people kind of going out of the Boston and going into the suburbs, and, you know, that kind of ties in with, with what we're looking to do downtown as well. You know, with being able to increase opportunities downtown. Another statistic that I thought was unfortunate was that more than 4,000 restaurants in Massachusetts have closed during the pandemic. And a large percentage, percentage of them are not expected to reopen. So there was some, some guidelines for the assessors to kind of, to, to think about. One was that they'll need to compile accurate information on income and expense statements for 2020. This should include any revenue received from PPP and, and local grants. Business personal property accounts will need to be closed if out of business as of January 1st, and loss of personal property tax dollars, which I know is always a concern. And again, there was just some, some other data about tracking, but it was, it was really a great, a great seminar. I had also attended the, the Women's Wemo seminar, and Mayor Spicer was able to speak through that. And that was very enlightening as well. It was something different and something nice. So I, I appreciated those. One other point I just wanted to touch on quickly, and I know Vanessa and I had talked about this, about the Community One Stop for Growth Portal. So Marty, if, if you're willing, I know her and I had a rather lengthy discussion. If, if you wouldn't mind allowing her two seconds to speak to this, I know she had also attended, and I just think it's, it's a great opportunity for...
Oh, no, 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 absolutely.
Okay. So Vanessa, I'll turn this over to you, and I'll, I'll jump in at the end if I need to, but I think you got this covered.
Thank you, thank you. I'll, I'll be very brief. You know, the hour is getting on. So the One Stop Grant Program is a new initiative that Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito put out just recently. And what it is, it's created a new portal at the state level for about 10 different agencies to do a streamlined application process. So and the, one of the really nice benefits of this is that this team, which the Lieutenant Governor, I believe, has called the Get Stuff Done Cabinet, is, is her, her new acronym for this. But so it's the Team Consultants at the State Level, made up of reps from a lot of these different agencies that are looking at your grants as they come in. You know, they're, they're, they're helping you determine, you know, what agency is the best fit for the project you're trying to do. So it's saving a lot of time and a lot of effort. One thing that they mentioned during some of the webinars last week was that they've decreased the amount of questions by 70%. So, you know, at, at our level, it's gonna save an enormous amount of time. The other thing that they're talking about within this new program is they're, they're helping you define what your project is. So if you just have an idea, but you're not really sure, well, is it ready for a grant program yet? You can still submit this idea, and they're, because they're working as basically our consultants, they're helping you figure out, well, is this ready? You know, is this shovel ready yet? Do you have all the information you need? If you don't, you, you know, let us help you find the details that you need to sort of move it forward. So it's, you know, it's energy and environment, it's housing, it's mass works, it's, you know, rural development, urban programming. There's two or three more that I think I'm forgetting off the top of my head. But so it's a brand-new program. The timelines are fairly strict. There, there is another webinar, I think, on Thursday. So Mark and I are in the process of pulling this information together and getting it out to all our department heads. And it's, it's something that they're looking to move quickly on. But again, I think it would be a huge benefit to us and our organization, and does a lot of the work that maybe we had thought about paying a grant writer to do. So I think it's perfect timing for us right now. And I'll turn it back to Lisa in case I left any details out.
No, I, I thought that was great, Vanessa, and I just, I just think it's, it's a great opportunity. And where we're looking at such budget crunches right now, to be able to utilize this and move forward with some grants that we may not have before. So again, I just think it's a great opportunity, and thank you, Vanessa, for that.
Thank you.
Marty, could I comment on MMA too?
Sure.
I said on that, I, I also saw the One Stop Grant thing. And what struck me about that, that's a great way to leverage our new part-time grant writer position to make them far more effective. But also, I said on the How to Get Public Health Right workshop, and I'm gonna pass along some information from that to our Board of Health. I think there's some very good ideas there. Some interesting regionalization opportunities that I think our Board of Health is, is willing to entertain. And so I think there's an opportunity in that direction. And I helped myself not get sleep easily by listening to the cybersecurity workshop. I continue to worry about our exposure there, and the longer we go without a IT manager, I think we continue to have risk there that, fortunately, we're probably pretty low on the radar screen from people who are looking for places to hack. But I gotta believe, given what I've heard from that workshop and other places, that we have great upside potential for hardening our target a little bit for people who might be wanting to do bad things with our technology infrastructure. So I would encourage us to continue to focus on ways to, again, shore that up and at least deflect those problems, make it easier for people to hack elsewhere, which is probably the best defense. So again, we just reinforce the need and a lot of attention being paid to this. And I hope that we'll be able to focus some on it going forward. So that's it for me. Thanks.
All right. I had, I had one for MMA, Marty, MMA. So I was in the Wemo session as well, and as part of the breakout portion, my group was talking about municipalities that have actually used... my group was talking about municipalities that have actually used CARES funds to get rooms set up to do Zoom. So that when boards and committees can start meeting at least two to five board members, they have the capability of getting the public participation through Zoom still. So that's something that I would like to work with Mark and Carla on exploring. And obviously in the absence of an IT director, I think we would need to look at utilizing someone to come in and look at probably public safety building, meeting room, and then the townhouse on what would need to be done to get those rooms up to speed. And it sounds like at your office hours last week, you got good positive feedback about the Zoom environment. And I'm also getting residents who are enjoying being able to view meetings and want to see that continue. So I think that might be something that we can capitalize on with CARES.
Great idea. All right. Update on interface for youth and family services. That is.
That's me.
Okay.
So I had the opportunity to meet with youth and family last week and attend an interface kickoff meeting. That went live yesterday and it is a hotline for Southborough residents to call to get matched up with a mental health counselor and or support. So there, it's a, it's a line that you can call between Monday, Monday to Friday, nine to five. If you are a family member and in need of counseling services. And the information is on the left-hand side of the Youth and Family Services webpage on the town website. So I just wanted to give that a plug so that we can spread the word for residents if they need that service.
Great. And is that aside from the Youth and Family Services website, is that something that's going to be on the town website? Or it is. Okay. Vanessa's nodding. All right. You guys are three steps ahead of me. Okay. Complete Streets Mass DOT Submission Update.
That's mine.
Mr. Stivers.
Uh, update from recent Public Works Planning Board meeting and sort of a heads up for our group. You're going to be seeing more of this shortly from Karen Galigan. Excuse me. DPW has been working on a project plan for Complete Streets, the funding now from the state. And the application is due late February, early March for the next funding cycle. They've been working with VHB Engineering Consultants, starting with the 2015 Sidewalk Committee Report, which identified 59 projects, mostly sidewalks and some related infrastructure updates. And they analyzed and reranked that, that report, the projects from that report and added a few to align with what they believe the state is likely to be interested in funding. So Karen is going to send that updated list at some point here to us for review approval and get on the submission track for the funding next time around. And I think the decision that's going to be asked of us is, is the list the right list? Are there any projects that we have that should be added to the list? And then to approve what I think will be a recommendation from Karen about a few projects for funding in this next round. List will have 60, 70 projects on it and we don't get many chances to update that list. So the, a broad list is useful. But then each funding cycle, we will probably pick three, four, or five projects to apply for funding. Given that the chance for actual funding is probably not great. You don't want to apply for too many. So again, that's coming hopefully next meeting or so to keep that process moving. They've got an updated sidewalk map through town, which is very interesting. And again, that will be, I think, a useful device to look for opportunities for additional projects in here. But VHB, I think, has done a pretty good job of analyzing, re-ranking there. And I think it'd be a great opportunity to get into that funding pipeline and maybe accelerate some of the sidewalk projects that Karen has been working on out of that 2015 report. So that's coming and I hope people can spend a little time looking at that and be ready to keep pushing it forward. Thanks.
I know Karen's on a roll. Make sure that, that her name is featured prominently on the, the paperwork. Good stuff.
Marty, can I, I know I actually was invited over the weekend to, to sit in on a cable show that's for the seniors. So I know it's within, it's outside of the 48 hour window because I couldn't add it to be updated. So is it okay if I just take a couple, a couple of seconds and, and just talk about?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I was invited to attend the Frank and Mary Show. It's, it's for seniors and it's done on Sam. And it, it was really a great opportunity and I'm looking forward to going back. I was invited to come back. So I guess it went well. But you know, we, we talked a lot about town meeting and the articles. And they're actually interested in having a couple of shows showcase some of the articles for town meeting. We talked a little bit about the budget and they're interested in, in having, you know, me come back and, and talk about the budget again. And again, it's all about giving information to the seniors. And I think this is really a great venue that we as a board haven't even, haven't touched or haven't been, had the opportunity to. So I, I think this was a really great opportunity. I was able to talk about office hours as well. We talked about the vaccine clinic. And Zoom, you know, we talked about how, how successful Zoom has been as, as Chelsea had mentioned. So I just wanted to share that. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the board going forward. You know, to be able to get word out to our seniors and, and just another avenue to address things. So.
Hey Lisa?
Yes.
I would think that's a, a much broader audience than seniors. I mean, anything we can do to inform the public generally about town meeting warrant articles and whatnot in terms of budget and so forth. Be great if we could find ways to publicize that much more widely than just through the senior center. And not, not focused or suggested it's limited just to seniors maybe.
Right. And I mean, their, their focus is senior Sam, but, but again, they're, they're like interested in, in some of the articles that may have carried over from last year. They're interested in having some of the proponents of the articles come in and, and giving them a little bit of a spotlight to talk about it, you know? And I, obviously I was thinking going forward, the downtown initiative, you know, might be something that we could go in. And it's only a half hour show, but it does have a broad reach and, and you're right, Sam, there may be knowing that, you know, we're going to be going and talking about a specific topic, we can certainly publicize it for the, for the public as well. It's just, again, it was a great forum, very laid back. It was, and I appreciated the opportunity to go there. So.
Did you have to change your name to Mary to be able to participate?
I did not. I did not.
Very quickly, I have, I have stumbled upon that show, but not because I was looking for it. If I were looking for it, how would I find it?
So it's on Sam. So you could actually access it from YouTube as well. If you go onto the Southborough Access Media page, the, the videos show, show up on there as well. And they actually, if, if you have it on the cable, you know, it, it, it shows like the Board of Selectmen's meetings running and whatnot. So.
Okay, great.
But yeah, you can access it through YouTube. It's, again, it's just another great venue and I was very thankful to be invited to go. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. All right. We're on to consent agenda, right, Mark?
Fine with me. Three and a half hours in is my sweet spot. So.
Town Administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, we've already touched on some of these issues, so I will try to just continue to move through. First, we did mention earlier about the Accelerate Bridge Replacement Project that Mastod is working on. This is to replace bridges on the Turnpike east and westbound over Flanders Road and Westboro, Parkerville, Corderville and Woodland in Southborough. It's going to happen between June and August of this year. There's some prep work that's going to be happening later this month. There's a virtual public meeting that's being held on Tuesday, February 9th at 6:00 PM. And to, to discuss a little bit more about how this is all going to work. It's going to be weekend work and they'll, they'll talk a little bit about that process. There's going to be Q and A. There is information. We'll have it up on our website. We'll tweet it. We'll send it to the blog. We'll get it out there, links to join the meeting. And then there's also the opportunity, if you want to just sign up for this information, they'll send emails when, when, when there's more information on the project. So that may be easier for some people to get. So we will post that up on the website. The, the next item is, and I assume if there's questions, people will just stop me. The, the next item is to try to close out an issue. If you remember, there was a request of, or information that was sent a couple of months back. Advisory wanted to take a look at accruals and payouts that happened last fiscal year during the pandemic. And Mr. Malinowski had given a report to advisory at one of their, one of their recent meetings. And I just wanted to kind of give the board the highlights of, of what he presented to, presented to advisory. So in terms of the year-end payouts, he took a look at, at, you know, who had been paid out for any accrued time. The department heads, there were four department heads who were eligible for a buyout of one week of vacation time per their contract, including me. I took advantage of that. The police chief took advantage. The fire chief chose not to take it. And even though he was eligible to do so, and the fire department had suspended their, the ability for their members to take time during the, during the, the beginning of the pandemic. And the, the chief had made an agreement with the union to pay out certain vacation and personal time due to, due to the suspension of leave. The agreement was issued as part of a directive by the chief. It was not grieved and advisory had raised the concern that there was no clear mechanism in the collective bargaining agreement that allowed for the payout of personal time. Vacation holiday was clearly covered. And, and the concern is that, that it may set a precedent. However, in the directive, the chief was explicit that, that, you know, that there was no precedent that was being set. Union had the opportunity to challenge that and did not. So does not feel that that issue remains. With SAP employees, there were six employees who originally granted carryover or vacation time beyond the provisions allowed in the SAP. When Jason worked with Brian Ballantyne and me to look at this and identified them, you know, we remedied those accruals, communicated the issue with the employees. In short, I got involved in a process I really didn't need to. And, and once the understanding was there, you know, I made sure that that was, that was remedied. Advisory also asked Personnel Board to take a look at the SAP, the bylaw in terms of the amount of accrued vacation that be carried over at any one time for SAP employees and take a look at the sick leave payout policy, which, which happens when people retire. And Personnel Board has taken that under advisement and they will take that up, you know, in the future. I do not believe that they'll be, this is something that they'll be able to get their hands around in time for this town meeting that's coming. As was alluded to earlier, all of our accrue, leave accruals are all handled centrally within the payroll, within Brian's department. Except for fire and fire is being brought over. When fire first gave the report as to the accruals for the members, something wasn't right in the report because the accruals looked tremendously out of whack, which I think is what Ms. Malinowski alluded to with regard to the auditor and the report that went. The auditor didn't get, we didn't get the corrective report until the auditor was, was basically, you know, finishing up the audit. And so those changes will be reflected, you know, in, in the next audit report. The issue was fixed. The accruals are correct. Everything is within the parameters that they should be. And there's, there's new process, you know, between the, between the Chief Achilles and, and Brian Ballantyne to move the whole management of that process now to the townhouse. And the payroll, payroll person, Brian's office is working with Harper's to get that, to get that all set up and that. So now that all accruals will all run through the townhouse, all through the payroll department. And, and you know, make it, make it more centralized. Marty, that's the issue on that.
All right. I just want to make sure there aren't questions or comments about this. I'll start with you, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. So if we could just go, Mark, I appreciate the, the update and and I appreciate that, that steps have been put in place for going forward. One, one of the things that most concerned me regarding the payout of the personal time outside of the contract was one that the board was, was unaware. And that was concerning to me because the Board of Selectmen signed the contract. And if a discussion regarding something obviously outside took place, I, I think the board should have been made aware of it, A. And I, I, I think, and I understand during COVID, but I think there should have been discussion all around on all of these topics with the board. And that's not to take away, you know, any authority mark that you have. And, and so I, I'm just concerned and I, and I would hope that, that going forward, and I know you and I have had this discussion, that, that going forward things hopefully aren't going to happen outside of a contract. There was a financial impact with this. I think the optics of it weren't necessarily good all around. And, and again, I think that there were missteps made and while I appreciate that things are fixed going forward. And I think your update covered most of these things. I would just hope that we would be maybe more informed going forward. And I guess I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
No, I, I hear you and, and I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the feedback. I mean, again, we've talked about this. And, you know, it was, you know, between March and June, you know, there was a lot going on and, you know, and I can't sit here and tell you that I had my finger on everything. You know, it was, you know, trying to move our operations all remote, you know, trying to, you know, you know, address issues. And, and like I said, I think, you know, no one did anything that, you know, that was done maliciously, you know, or, you know, or intentionally didn't do something for a particular reason. So, and to I'm hoping that this was a one, one time, you know, issue. These are issues like we talked a little bit about, you know, in the management letter. These are one-time issues, you know, and I don't see there, there being opportunities for these issues to be revisited. So hopefully, you know, that piece, you know, is, is behind us.
No, and I appreciate that. I just, again, I, I, I was concerned. Concerned that, that, that payments were made outside of a contract that, that, you know, no one was aware of and, and, and how that could have happened. But, and again, I appreciate steps have been put in place. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Chelsea, did you have something?
I do. Yeah. So I have a few comments on, on this one. I think, I think a few different themes came out of this and, and on the accrual issue, I'm glad to see that steps have been put in place, but I, I'm not sure that that was a one-time issue. I think, I think we've identified an issue. But I'm also concerned that it came to advisory to find these issues. So, so that's concerning from my perspective is, you know, this was out there for how long? And so I'm, I'm glad to see that we've moved it out of the fire department, but that's concerning to me. I'm embarrassed as a board member on the optics of this. I think that as a board member, I expect to know when operation, things outside of regular operations are changed or any financial impact happens. Now I understand that everything was under, was still within the budget, but I still think that it should have been brought to the board to say, and, and maybe we would have agreed that that was the right decision, but I think kind of like what Lisa said, I would rather know ahead of time rather than in, on the backend. I also think that there's policy, so there's, there's policy. And then I think there was kind of sloppiness related to some of the issues out of here. And I, I really hope that Personnel Board takes this under advisement in terms of the liability that is, is in the SAP in terms of vacation and sick time. I think if you look at what has, how people can accrue, I, I don't know of any place that you're allowed to actually get paid out for more than what you're, you're accruing for. So I hope that they take it under serious consideration for sooner rather than later to take a look at that and, and make a recommendation. So I, you know, I think going forward, I'm looking for more, a more proactive approach and more collaborative approach so that we can make the right decisions for the town, the employees and the taxpayers.
Anything?
One, one other comment?
Yeah. Hold on a second, Sam. I'm just going through. Brian? No, all set? Okay, Sam, go ahead.
Again, I echo Chelsea's comments. I was surprised to see advisory come up with this one. So that to me was interesting commentary on their internal review of the process. And I think it, it sounds like it's fixed now, but makes you wonder what else might be lurking there. And I think that you need to take a careful look at this and related issues internally.
I don't want this to have a characterization, Sam, as to what you, you know, you just said, well, if this is out there, then what else is out there? Right? I, I don't think that's a fair assessment. Right? I I don't think that's a fair assessment. I I don't appreciate the characterization, Chelsea, of sloppiness. You know, but I I, you know, I hear the comments and, you know, I, you know, we'll take them back. And, you know, like I said, we're going to move forward and we're going to move forward the right way. So I appreciate that.
All right, all set with this item?
I think so.
COVID-19 vaccine update.
So one of the things that, you know, we've been looking at, and I think has been the focus of Board of Health, as well as the Senior Center, has been trying to find, you know, find ways to get, you know, our most vulnerable populations, you know, taking care of internal vaccines. I had hoped to have a little bit more information for you tonight. I know that Board of Health has been working with surrounding communities and trying to find opportunities, you know, that that we can exploit or explore to try to get some of our some of our seniors over seventy five vaccinated. Those have not come to fruition yet. I I think that, you know, the the lack of determination of vaccine being available is part of that issue. But there is a new link on the COVID page on the town website for for the Council on Aging, trying to determine who wants a vaccine. Do they have their own transportation? A lot of those things because these, the information comes quickly as to when things are available. And I know that the computer signups are part of, you know, part of the issue. And so it's it's something that, you know, that we're working on and we continue to talk about. Again, looking at a at putting on a town vaccination clinic when we open it up to the general public. We're still working with AFC in Marlboro to to administer that clinic for us. And again, it's going to be dependent on vaccine. So I hope to have more news. This is probably going to be an item like the budget that we keep on each agenda and and just give you updates as we get them.
Mark, I I I suspect I'm not telling you something that you and a lot of others, but but when I hear population seventy five and older, and I hear links on the website, et cetera, there's a real disconnect there. And I know that the senior, and it it sounds like the the Senior Center is very involved with this because I know they have a a battery of phone numbers and the like. I I just think that that that, and I'm not suggesting anybody is doing this, but but computers are not going to be the answer for making sure that the seventy five and older population is informed about this sort of stuff.
Well, I know that the, yeah, the seniors into that point, Marty, the senior Senior Center and Pam and her staff, you know, they've been doing personnel outreaches. And so I think that I think that this is just another avenue, you know, to try to get that same information back. But you know, they have great databases for for our seniors. They can they can organize it by age. They can go down through and and, you know, and probably, you know, grab, you know, a couple of hundred people who are eligible, you know, for for a vaccination clinic, you know, in a fairly short time. So I think it's just another avenue because there are some seniors that are, you know, more computer savvy than others. But but I do know that that is one of the, well, it is one of the hangups of, you know, of this process.
I guess the one other thought is is is, and maybe this conversation has already happened, but if the Senior Center needs manpower to, in other words, if 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 they don't have enough people to do the reaching out, particularly on a short term basis, then we as a town need to figure out a way to to supplement that.
And Pam and Pam has got, she's got great staff, but on top of that, she's also got great volunteers and she's got a go to team that she can go to and bring them in, you know, to to help out with that type of stuff. But if it gets beyond her, she's not afraid to yell. So.
Okay.
Yeah, Marty, if I can just add to on on top of what Mark said is that was brought up today on the Frank and Mary Show. And and Pam said she has a long list of volunteers that it will take a couple of phone calls and and she could have as many people as she needs, you know, doing outreach. So I don't think manpower on this is an issue at this point. She's got a lot of volunteers.
Good, good, good to hear. All right.
And one, one last issue. Let's leave, let's leave on a good note. So just updating the board on the the Land Court issue, Town of Southborough versus Cram. As you, as the board knows, this was something, this was a a tax title case where the town took possession of the property. The owner had wanted to redeem the property. The board agreed to allow the homeowner to redeem the property so long as all fees and and expenses and everything for the town were all taken care of and the town was made whole. The letter was issued on January twenty sixth to Land Court seeking to a motion to withdraw the complaint because on January twenty fifth, the town received a check for sixty five thousand eight hundred sixty seven dollars and fifty six cents to fully satisfy the outstanding taxes and also all of the legal fees and and expenses the town incurred in in taking this through the process of 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 acquisition. So that matter is successfully closed.
Great. And nice job by Mr. Cipriano in in.
And Mr. Ballantyne.
And Mr. Ballantyne bringing that whole process home. Great. All right, consent agenda, open session minutes from January nineteenth. Any edits? Changes, et cetera? None? Whoa, whoa.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'll go back and look again.
Where where are we on the clock here? All right. So I'll move to approve the open session minutes for January nineteenth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shea. Discussion none. Ms. Braccio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Ms. Divers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. We are done with the consent agenda. Other matters, we already dealt with A, seven B. Recommendation for shared administrative position between selectmen and treasurer offices. I'm not sure what your plan is on this, Mark. I mean, it it seems like a pretty reasonable. I'm not, I guess my one question is, do you need us to approve this? Or are you just? In other words, it seems like something that falls within your administrative, you know, responsibilities. Is it? Is it because it's the selectman's office? I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, so I I tend to, while I'd like to agree with you and and I tend to agree with you on that, it is because it is the selectman's office. We are changing how we what we do with this administrative position. And I really think that if the selectmen aren't supportive of what they want to do, it makes it more difficult to carry it forward budgetarily. So, you know, I do want to, I I did want to bring this to the board, you know, for for comments, consideration. The the job description.
My only question was, do we actually need to approve it? I understand that makes sense.
I I I don't, I don't think that you need to approve it. I, you know, I'd appreciate a vote, but but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything on it. I'll start again with you, Lisa.
Okay, I I have a couple. Do you want to split this into like two pieces, Mark? I mean, the 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 this position and then the job descriptions. I I have comments on all, so.
Yeah, so I I have had comments with some of you. Some of you have had a lot of comments, some I haven't had any, some, you know, here and there. There's two things going on here. One is redefining the administrative assistant position in the selectman's office. The second ancillary pieces are that the executive assistant and the now visible assistant town administrator have not had the the, you know, the job descriptions haven't been updated in quite a while. So trying to bring those up to, you know, up to where they are now to reflect what is being done and 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 by who. But I I think to your point, Lisa, it's important for us to move forward with the shared position. And if we feel that, you know, we want to talk a little bit more about the revised job descriptions for the other two positions, then I agree with you that we should break those up so as not to hold one back for the sake of the other two.
So I, my comments are brief on both. So on the shared position, I initially, when this was pitched, and I understand that advisory, Brian had given a a different number, and I'm just it's, I I would like some form of justification how we got from ten hours to seventeen hours. I think that's, for me, that's a big change. Also, under the administrative support will be provided to conservation, IT and EDC. I don't know what type of support we would be providing. EDC has an admin. So and and my bigger concern was that sentence ends as well as committees that have no staff liaison. You put that out there and every board and committee that doesn't have someone to take their minutes potentially or, you know, somebody to help with something, I think that's opening a Pandora's box.
So I I think I think that's forward looking to to be honest with you. And you know, maybe maybe it's a little bit too ambitious. I know there was originally discussion about do we put the ZBA responsibilities inside this position too? And again, I thought that was way too ambitious and we're going to promise too much and not deliver anything. I know that Melissa Danza is is, she's, you know, attending, you know, she could speak to this. She had provided a list of about ten things that, you know, that administratively, you know, could help with beyond simply payroll and payables. And I think IT and EDC are more, I don't want to say self reliant, but really beyond payroll and payables is really not a whole lot, I think, of of need there. But with conservation, I think there is. And of the ten items that that Melissa gave me, you know, about five of them, I think, are administrative pieces that on a regular basis we can help with. The other ones are more project based, but it's going to free her up to do more professional responsibilities, which, you know, which which is helpful.
So I actually didn't have a question on the conservation piece. I I think conservation gave a you know, a really good presentation at the last meeting. The question I do have on the conservation is how many hours? So if if I look at it, it's a thirty four hour position. And seventeen hours go to Brian, though I'm I'm still not sure on the seventeen. That leaves seventeen hours as an admin for the Board of Selectmen. How many hours out of that seventeen are you figuring to a lot to conservation a week?
You know, this is, it's funny, when I've had this conversation with Brian about hours, I've had this conversation with, you know, about about hours. It's going to be flexible and it's going to depend on what's going on. I mean, there are certain things that are going to happen every week, you know. Payroll and payables, it's like death and taxes, you know, it's going to happen. We're going to have to do this, you know. Melissa may get, you know, information requests in for you know, for somebody who needs a set of plans pulled, you know, and and the plans happen to be in the basement, you know, or we can't, we have them. A lot of our plans of conservation are electronic, but they're not, you know, categorized in any way that you can find them. So it's kind of a hunt and peck method. Melissa's been working to improve that. You know, how often those things are, you know, are going to happen? It's it's similar to, I think, some of the efficiencies we created in the office when Maureen Collier retired and, you know, and then and then Lori came in and she's doing a lot of the same things, but she's doing some of them in a different way, which provides more capacity to do other things, which is why she's doing more procurement, you know, than, you know, and 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 that was something that really that Maureen didn't do. So it's it it's going to be feeling our way through as to as to what is realistic and what, you know, what isn't. But but I don't think on a weekly basis, you can say you've got five hours, you've got this time, you've got this time. It's it's going to be a process to work through as to as to where the hours go on a weekly basis.
Okay, so I I guess, Mark, my 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 question then is, is I'm trying to understand the seventeen hours for Brian. Like I said, when we went through this process before, it's always been ten in the discussions. So that that's one question I have. I did have a some questions on the job description itself. Actually, one question. You know, and I won't go through the the executive assistant or the assistant town administrator if, like you said, we'll do that as a separate piece, if we just stick to this piece. So I just wondered on this where, and I actually had this conversation with you earlier, about the preferred experiences from familial. Oh, my gosh, I can't even. It's late. Familiar. I can't say it.
If you can't pronounce it, you can't apply. That's part of the test.
Oh, I can't. This is, this is a bit. Familiarity. There we go. Okay. With with social media, website updates and other marketing. So I I see overlap potentially on that with another job description. So yeah, I I guess I'll I'll leave it at that. I mean, if 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 it's more of a backup to to that, Vanessa's raising her hand.
That's that's exactly what it is. I, you know, Katie and I have been spending a bit of time on this since she's transitioned up to the selectman's office. It's really to have a backup, you know, to me and to provide some cross training and to have, you know, someone else to help other departments if if they're starting to get a little bit more active in in social media. So, you know, it's been my primary area, but we definitely want to have a bit of cross training.
Okay, so I guess I guess that was it. And I see Brian's here.
Yeah, I don't know if Brian, you know, Brian looks all wide awake in that. You know, if he wants to, if he wants to speak, you know, speak to the, I guess, speak to the need.
Or put it this way. So I would be happy to to have a discussion with Brian offline. I'm not necessarily against the thirty four hours. It's just how we make up the thirty four hours. So Brian, you you can certainly address it now, or we can certainly have a discussion offline. I'm I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, we can follow up offline, but basically, basically, I underask. I mean, I always underask. And and advisory told me that. You never ask for anything. So I asked for ten. It was a low ball. And I should have asked for more. And I probably should have asked for more a long time ago, but I never did. So it's my own fault.
Fair enough. So we could talk offline, Brian, and and and, you know, just just to understand the seventeen. That's all.
Sure.
What would you envision that to be? That's it for that piece. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Mrs. Malinowski.
Okay, so if we're going to separate into the thirty four hour position and the job descriptions on the thirty four hour position, I would like to commend Mark and Brian for looking to combine forces and get some get some efficiencies between their two departments. I think that's the right route to go, especially at this point. I know we're under a tough budget season. And, you know, I'm sure that they would have loved to have forty hours. So I'm happy that we're trying to work in whatever we can. So thank you for that. I agree with Lisa that I think we need to kind of massage that that hour out, the hours allocation and you know, I think with Brian's staff in particular, there are certain days that payroll needs to get done. And so I I think it also depends on the week and it may be cyclical. So I think if we can have some flexibility so that so this person can kind of pinch hit when when Brian needs it. And I also would like to see us be able to utilize this person maybe heavier on the treasure treasury side at the initially, so that we can give Brian's staff the opportunity to cross train each other on the functions that they're doing today and also on improving their their operations and systems that they have. So I think you know, I I would I'm supportive of of giving Brian the support that he needs, but I would I would like to see us be able to kind of alleviate some of the manual stuff that's happening. So I think, so I think in terms of the position, I I I'm supportive of it. I think in my opinion, Mark, we should be looking to advertise for it so that you can get it going. And because I think the longer that we wait for for Brian's staff, then we're just going to continue to operate the way that we're doing. And, you know, kind of figure out where things lie. And are there better ways to do things for IT and EDC or, you know, whoever else? I think we can work through that. I think that's it on the on the hours or the position. For the job descriptions, I think that actually some things that came out of the meeting tonight, I would like to get more information on where where they should lie within the selectman office. So I'm not, I I I think those job descriptions still need some work. So I think if we can kind of take that up as it may in a future meeting.
Well, I would suggest that, and and again, you know, if 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 there's information that we want, you know, that you want to give us offline, if if you want to work with us offline on some of these things, I'd really like to get because this is just the beginning of the process, really, with with at least this administrative shared position. Because this now is going to have to go to to Personnel Board. Personnel Board is going to have to review this. If they feel there's a substantial enough change, which there may be, then they have to put it through a review process to find out if it's graded properly. And and again, this is all going to kind of hold us up a little bit. So, you know, it'd be great if there was, you know, general assent, you know, to what we're doing. And then if we want to, you know, figure out the particulars of of of, you know, the mechanics of it as we move forward, we can continue to move forward and we can we can do those things, you know, you know, kind of in parallel as we go. But I I appreciate the comment, Chelsea. It's it's been again, this is a little bit of a feeling out process. You know, we know what we want to do for this. I know that, you know, everybody was pretty much on board last year with trying to give Brian some additional. I know that, you know, everybody was pretty much on board last year with trying to give Brian some additional hours. So it's kind of funny that last year Brian wanted a 20-hour position or 19 and a half hour position, and advisory was good with that. It seemed that Selectmen might be good with that. But budgetarily, it wasn't working. And Brian, you know, as he just said, he got, you know, he just decided, you know what? I'm just pulling back, you know, because it was more for the overall good than it was for, you know, for Brian. So I think that, you know, we'll have to figure out how this works, what hours we're actually assigning, and we're going to have some history. This isn't something we're going to say we're going to do, and maybe five years from now, we'll take another look at it. You know, this is something that we're going to come back and we're going to say, this is how this is working. We're actually putting more time here than we thought we were. And, you know, it's going to help us make decisions moving forward when we do create efficiencies. And remember, creating efficiencies don't necessarily mean we have savings and money and hours. Sometimes it means we identify that we should spend a little more and add a little more time to certain things and that for the benefit of the process.
Mr. Shea.
I think I agree with most of what's been said so far. And, you know, with respect to the 17 hours versus 10, I'm just wondering, should we even include that 17-hour breakdown? You know, should we just, because it doesn't change the fact that it's still a 34-hour position, right? And I think that, you know, allowing the flexibility to use those as best needed. And I think we also just need to recognize that, you know, we're in a position now where nobody's entering the townhouse. Hopefully, we can still allow the proper flexibility so that when the time comes that the townhouse is open as normal, that disposition still, you know, provides that flexibility that all the different groups are still looking for.
Well, I think, I think two things to your point, Brian. One, I think as long as Brian and I are in our respective positions, I don't think it's something where you have to say, you've got this many hours, I've got this many hours. Because there's going to be that ebb and flow and we understand that. The second thing is, is that the two offices for the shared position are like five feet away, right? This isn't a building-to-b buildings type of thing. So, you know, it doesn't mean that when this, if this person is sitting in Brian's, in Brian's side of the world, and I haven't quite decided if it's better visually to do a setup over on Brian's side of the world and basically have somebody handling things, you know, you know, over there. It doesn't mean they can't be doing Selectmen-related things while they're over there. It doesn't mean that somebody can't be taking payments while they're doing Selectmen stuff type of thing. So, like I said, I don't know the division of hours. I wanted to give you an idea of what we're looking to do, but, you know, unless Brian's going to, you know, run and scream, I think that, you know, saying you've got this many hours, we've got this many hours is probably the least of the issue right now.
Yeah.
Mr. Styris.
Thanks. I think it's a good concept, Mark and Brian, and I'm not so concerned about exactly parceling out the hours. I think, again, you guys are very capable of making the right decisions in terms of flexing time, as schedules and workloads require here. I am concerned that folks know that I've been pushing for quite a while in terms of getting some capacity for conservation. So my concern would be to make sure that there is enough opportunity in here to take some pressure off Melissa in terms of administrative support. So that would be, again, something that I would look to you folks to sort out and make sure that done effectively, which I have confidence will happen. My one question at a higher level is, I wonder if we've been looking at this broadly enough. I think the concept of flexing staff and sharing workloads across traditional organizational boundaries is a great idea. If you can do it managerially, and we're small enough, I think that we ought to be able to do that. I think, for example, about the Facilities Department, we've got some capacity, resources there. Now, should we consider that one as an opportunity, again, for flexing some workload and time, even though they're physically located in a different place? I don't think that's necessarily a huge barrier. I think that Building Department is another option, but I continue to believe that as the economy starts to recover, the Building Department staffing is going to be fairly actively involved there. So I don't see that as a significant source of additional capacity longer term here. But, and maybe there are other departments out there, but again, Facilities is the one that popped up for me that might be interesting to look at. A resource here that you could think about shared capacity for. So, but again, great concept, and I think we're small enough that we can make it work and flex to implement. And I do have some thoughts on the job descriptions, and I'll follow up individually with you, Mark, on what holds up for that. So anyway, I'm supportive of the concept. I think we ought to get moving and make it happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mark, I'm the the cat with stripes, not neither black nor white. I just think it's a managerial decision. It's not additional, it's not additional resources and, you know, we're not on the ground. And unless it seemed crazy for some reason, I just think that, my view is that, 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 you know, we're at a policy level, not at a management level, and I'm reluctant to get too granular about stuff like this. The idea seems good. I have to trust the folks on the ground about how the division of hours and labor goes. And if it turns out that it's wrong, well, then you're held to task for it. But I think it's a, I think it's a good idea and I'm willing to trust the management decision about it.
No, I appreciate that, Marty. And but I did know in some of the conversations with other Selectmen that I don't think that everybody, you know, everyone, I don't want to say they didn't share that view, but I think there's some people want, you know, to understand and be involved in the details a little bit more, and I want to make sure that everybody's interests are.
Yeah, I said, that's why I'm striped. I understand that it's a slightly different view, but I, it's my view. So.
Yep. Nope. I don't, and I feel badly because I had asked Melissa if she wanted to come tonight in case there was anything to say, and I probably would be hearing about it tomorrow if she came in and she didn't say anything and then she left. So Melissa, I didn't know if you had any comments?
She's gone.
No, I, no, I, you know.
Oh, she's there. Okay.
I'm here. No, it's, I completely agree. You know, I thank you for, you know, all the input. I think, you know, between me, Brian and my Mark, we can definitely figure out, you know, how this will. I know, I said just three names at once. It's late for everyone. It's fine.
10 o'clock and it gets kind of, you know.
This is my second meeting of the night, so I'm meeting doubt.
I know, and that's why I appreciate you being here.
No, I, you know, I agree with all of you. I get the concerns about the differences in times, but I think between the three of us, you know, we can definitely find the best way to make things work. You know, like Mark said, I definitely have some things that, you know, are kind of monthly and cyclical that can, you know, be passed off to this type of shared person where they might not need to know the day-to-day activities that I do, but they can at least take the burden off if I'm out of the office doing site visits or just doing the routine stuff. So this will be, you know, a great help to start. And I, I'm, you know, I think I'm as hopeful as Mark and Brian to get this on the road and get that stuff in as quickly as possible. So that's about it for me.
And I do know, I do know it's beneficial also, you know, to give conservation the minute taker. Because, you know, I know from experience how difficult it is to be the professional in the meeting and have to take minutes at the same time. It's really, it's very, very difficult. So, you know, I think that that piece has made things a little bit better for Melissa in terms of a meeting perspective. And now, if we can allow her to focus more on enforcement and her professional duties and help with the admin pieces, then that should, you know, give her a little bit more.
I agree.
So Mark, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to where I started. Are you comfortable just with the sentiments of support and where you are? Or do you want, I'm not even sure what the motion would look like, an actual vote on the proposal, if that's what it is?
I don't want to make, I don't want to make this harder than it has to be. So unless anybody has got, you know, and, you know, someone's got a bugaboo about moving forward, I'll, I'll take, you know, some of the comments, you know, that, you know, offline, you know, to discuss this, but we'll continue moving forward with this. So I, but I appreciate the feedback.
Everybody comfortable with that approach? Do we not? Yes, okay. All right. Review of RFP documents for legal services. Mark, I think, at least my view is that is to make this relatively easy for us. And that is, I mean, the, the, the general concept and all of the materials provided is, is similar. Come up with an amalgam and of a proposed RFP. That's my view of it. I mean, I I didn't think that any one was particularly, some were strong in some areas, some were, you know, weak in other areas. At least that was my view. I guess my inclination is, is you, you you do the hard work now. You come up with a, an amalgam of those samples and make a proposal to us. What do other folks think?
And I'm fine, I'm fine with that. If there's any, if there's anyone that.
Let me see what other folks think first.
Yeah.
Is there agreement with that or?
Well, I, I went through and I have a list that I'll pass along to Mark. I pulled out things that I thought were important out of all of them. But they're certainly common themes. Clearly, they've been sharing RFP language.
Okay, anyone else?
No, I, I agree with that as well. I went through them. I particularly liked Chatham. That was just, that wasn't me, but basically they're all the same things. They all say the same thing, so.
Okay, I think you made your marching orders, Mark.
Yeah, I have my one question and I'll, you know, and if the board wants to give me the input offline, that's fine too. But the one question in some of the documents, they talk about why they're going out to bid for, you know, for legal services. You know, some of them, I think Shrewsbury, you know, their council was retiring. You know, someone else, you know, they've decided to, you know, to make, to make a change or whatever. So that's something that I think that statement, or if you decide to put something in like that, that probably something that should come from the board. So just something to think about.
Leave that out. We'll think about it.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Timetable for Town Administrator Review. The, the, I've got clean copies. Does anybody think that we should use anything other than we used last time? No, okay. And they're ready to go. I mean, my inclination is to send them out tomorrow and have a two-week, do we want to do a two-week window for getting them back?
Sounds good.
All right. So Friday is, what, the 5th? So let's say by the 19th. We'll get them out this week to be returned, I guess, to me. Ah, damn. I guess, there's, there's no one else. Yeah, I won't, I won't burden Russ with it this time. And I, he's educated me. I think I know enough of what I'm doing to be able to collate the information and put it in a package to get back to everybody.
The Personnel Board member to collect them, maybe?
I'm sorry, what?
Personnel Board member to collect and collate and synthesize.
You know, I'm more comfortable doing it myself. I just, you know, it doesn't change the information, and I just know that I'll adhere to a timetable.
Okay.
I won't have to manage somebody else to get it. Okay? All right, that was easy. We already did the MTC survey documents. Final thing before either Ms. Connelly or Mr. Lit have public comment, is the scheduling of the form. Is Planning doing this on February 22nd? They are. So what do folks think? Should we do it? There should be some sort of contemporaneity? Should be close in time. Do you think we should try to do it before, after, in the middle of hearings? What are folks' thoughts?
Maybe that's a before.
Yeah. I think, Marty, too, one of the things that we need to consider is, I mean, typically, the Board of Selectmen don't present a zoning article, but it's got to go before Planning Board in the process. So I think having feedback in advance of the Planning Board hearings may give us some time to put together some answers that may come up, because that's the one thing we haven't really considered is we have to present and we have to answer the questions at Planning Board on this article. I mean, I, I'm certainly not a zoning guru. I mean, that's why we brought Judy Barrett in. So through all of the hearings that Planning Board has at their meetings, you know, the Board of Selectmen has to, you know, answer questions. I mean, the initial meeting is, you know, is presenting it. And I imagine that would be done with, you know, working with EDC, obviously, because, you know, they did a lot of the legwork on this. But I think we need to think ahead to the 22nd, and that's why they think the form is probably a good dry run on how we want to present it. There's certainly going to be questions I'm not going to be able to answer. I mean, I'm not a zoning person. I stepped up to try to move the process along and stay on the timetable. I know, you know, Sam, Sam's well aware of zoning as well, but it's going to have to be a a group effort on behalf of the Board of Selectmen as we go through the Planning Board hearings. So I just want to throw that out there.
I guess, I guess there's two, at least two categories of questions. Number one are, I guess, political questions. You know, why are we doing this? What are we intending to accomplish, et cetera, et cetera? That's not, that's not nuts and bolts zoning stuff. The nuts and bolts zoning stuff, it just strikes me that we want a nuts and bolts zoning person there.
Like Judy?
I'm sorry?
Like Judy?
Yeah.
So I don't necessarily disagree, Marty, but so it will be on, they will open the hearings. My understanding is, and Sam, you can correct me. You probably know this as well. From now until town meetings, they will open the hearing at the meetings to see if there's any questions, because they leave it open.
Yep.
Through town meetings. So is that something that we want to book Judy potentially to be on standby to show up for? Or do we want to consider just the first meeting? Because I know the Planning Board is going to probably ask some tough questions. And I would expect, even though we had general consensus at our meeting, all of the Planning Board members weren't there. So I expect some pretty tough questions. And it's, I'm not going to lie, it's certainly not my forte. I mean, I think we need to consider how we want to approach that.
Again, it's just, I think any of us can answer the political questions.
Yep.
It's the, but the zoning questions? It's no way, no way in, in, in two years am I going to, you know, get up to speed enough to be able to explain why if you move this, you know, if this piece, it affects that piece, and what other towns have done, and what you're going to accomplish or not accomplish by doing that? I mean, that's nuts and bolts zoning stuff.
Yeah. I agree.
Do we have a mechanism to involve Judy in this?
Well, I'm not sure. I would imagine that there are still funds within the grant. I just don't know if it falls on Mark. Maybe you can answer this, if it falls or, I know, actually, I think Julie Connelly's still in the audience as well. I don't know if this falls within the four corners. You know, having her come to some of these meetings, because I mean, the grant money dries up June 30th. So and I believe we've only used 12,000, Mark, 14,000?
I think we've, I think we've spent, you know, we paid out expenditures of about $12,000.
So I mean, there is monies there, as long as it fell within the four corners of the grant.
Imagine that, that, that somehow the work that's been done up until now to put it in a, in a, in a, in a form for a proposal that that's covered and then explaining that form isn't, it's got to be. But I don't have the language of the, of the, of the grant in front of me. Julie, raise your hand if you think that this is either an easy answer one way or the other, or if it's kind of complicated.
It's raised.
All right, it's raised.
Hey there. Yeah, I'm sure that this is fine. I think the, the two sort of technical, technical concerns are, I think we, you know, obviously, we'd have to give her more money than what we've already engaged her for, because I think we engaged her for, you know, two rounds of revisions. I think we've probably already talked on that. That's one. And two, just, you know, thinking back a couple of months to when we tried to set up a meeting with her originally. I know she gets booked pretty far in advance. So my only concern with sort of being on this tight timetable of having a Planning Board meeting that's coming up in just a few weeks. Also, I'm not sure, you know, this year obviously is a little bit different, but, you know, there is the the school vacation week right before that. I don't know if that changes, you know, how we think about planning forum, but I also agree with Sam and with Lisa that I think it makes sense to do the forum prior to the Planning Board hearing.
Okay, so.
I'll reach out to Judy.
Yeah, we're meeting on the 16th, which is the Tuesday before. We could wrap it into that. Or we could do it on a separate date that same week presumably. Is that, the vacation week is not the week of the 15th, it's the week of the 27th? Isn't vacation week the twenty second?
No, the fifteenth is actually the third Monday of February. I made the same mistake setting up the calendar here at home, so.
Oh, see, I still go that it's Washington's birthday.
That's the twenty second. Is anybody going anywhere in school vacation week?
People are skiing, Sam. They're 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 going away and and doing a little bit of skiing anyway.
Skiing's the best thing you can do in this weird world we find ourselves. Um, so what, anyway, what what do you, do you want to do it? Even though that, I guess, it's school vacation week, we can't do it next week. That's just too quick.
No.
Um, and I and I think it makes sense. So what what do folks think generally? Do you want to do it, wrap it into our regular meeting and carve out an hour and a half or so? I really don't think it's going to be more than that.
The recording just ended.
Yeah, we hit our time limit.
Yeah.
Careful if I find out you can do that. At quarter after eight, it's going to go off.
You know, Marty, and it, sorry. I'm just thinking, a a good dry run is also going to be, um, you know, the the forum that we have as well, you know. Um, as far as the questions that they get asked and and how well we can answer them as well, I mean, if Judy's not available. So I I I think there's great opportunity, but the third piece to this is, is we have to also um, think about what we want to present. I mean, we're going to have to put something up on the screen on on how we're going to present it. Um, so, and again, I haven't I can certainly work with with Julie and 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 Marika and and come up with something, you know, a a draft of a a presentation to, um, you know, to have. But I I would, obviously, I would want feedback from the board in advance of that as well.
Um, Lisa, I I can offer, I mean, in in the packet that we provided, um, that we were hoping to send out to the to the butters and residents, I think that actually lays a pretty good, um, template for for a presentation. So, um, you know, if you guys are meeting, you said on the sixteenth, which is the Tuesday, is that right?
Yep.
Um, I mean, I don't know if that's, I'm trying to think when else we could, we could do it before then. Um, unless we had it like on that Wednesday night, um, potentially, and, um, you know, and and you guys could approve, if that's enough notice. Um, we can certainly have something put together before then or earlier. I mean, I I don't know i- if, you know, if if you can, if it's something you guys need to vote on or or can just be circulated, or, I mean, whatever you think is best, but but I'm sure that um, Marika and and I, working with you, Lisa, can put together something pretty quickly. I think the framework's already there.
No, I agree. And 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 I think what Julie is referencing is the information packet that we had kind of gone through at the meeting and all of the changes that we had discussed at the meeting were taken out, the things that we had wanted taken out, some of the images. And, um, I actually had no changes to what was left. I mean, just just the pieces that we had discussed. So we could certainly circulate that, Julie, because on the back of that is a is a copy of the downtown initiative itself, and and maybe that's um, the packet. So that's something we can distribute to the board relatively quickly, because it's already, Marika's already completed the changes to that. So, um, we can certainly do that well in advance of the meeting and and have the board have opportunity to look through it.
Yeah, if there's a, if there's a map, just in terms of informing, if there's a map of what just what the what what the, you know, the district that's going to be covered, if we've got the text of the proposed zoning article.
Yep, it's in there.
We've got the 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 abridged version of of what had been done previously. I mean, boy, that's a pretty good roadmap for presentation.
I agree, but I just wanted, you know, the board to, obviously, i- as we're presenting it as a whole, I wanted the board to be aware of what what we were going to present. So, um, we can certainly provide something.
The the, we're back to when?
Yeah.
So what is the uh, sixteenth agenda look like presently? Is that going to result in hopefully not a four and a half hour meeting that night, or is it?
Well, I I I mean, there's 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 stuff like, for instance, the the, um, the municipal, um, technology folks wanted to come in on the sixteenth. I think we can push them till to to March second. I mean, there's no, um, urgency, um, I don't think. I mean, I'll reach out, I can reach out to Matt Prost, but I don't think there's urgency to it happening on the sixteenth. Um, Lisi, you had raised.
The quarterly financial update, Chelsea, does that, it it looks like that's going to be for the sixteenth?
Yes.
And does it, well, I guess my question is, for all these things, does it have to be the sixteenth?
It it doesn't, it doesn't have to be. I I don't know that it's a, I don't know that it's a big item. Hopefully, it turns into a more routine item, so. Um.
I mean, we talked about capital planning, Lisa, can we kick them to March second? Because that's going to be a lengthy conversation.
I would say no on that one, Marty. Um, just based on the discussions we've had, so. Um, and and again, you know, this this forum could be well attended and, you know, vacation week, it could be five people, you know, but again, um, I I suppose we could start the forum during the meeting. I'm 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 just trying to think this through. If we started it during the meeting and and we found that it was too much, then I suppose, but it would be tough to schedule something else before Planning Board. That's my concern.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? I think I think we can do it on one night. Um, um, we'll kick municipal over to March second. I gotta believe we can do that. Think about whether or not the, um, financial, the quarterly financial can go over to March second. If capital can't, that's fine. Um, let's, let's, uh, I don't think there's anything in the offing on executive session, right, Mark?
I hope not.
Um.
I hope not.
So let's, 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 let's start at six o'clock with our regular meeting and have a forum at seven thirty.
Do we envision the the potential for multiple forums? And the reason I'm asking that, this kind of ties into a conversation that we had with Claire uh, that Marty and I did during office hours. And it's, you know, strategies for educating town meeting attendees prior to town meeting. And we look back at a couple of huge successes and one success was preceded by a huge failure with the Main Street easement thing. And it was just much more of a concerted effort with the public safety building. And the second time around with the easements to know that we needed to really engage people and educate them ahead of time and take the time. And we had the advantage back then of being able to interact with people at the transfer station. And, you know, have plans made that people could go over and look at, and you could talk to people about it. And we're living in a time now where you can't interact with people, you know, and you can't, it's much more difficult to meet in person. So so this is, this is a challenge that we're going to face with this. So there's, we're kind of breaking new ground on you know, exactly how is it that you're going to get a, you know, a potential zoning article passed? You know, at a time where it's so difficult to to interact with people.
Yep, I agree. And and I'm I'm believing, I'm not thinking in terms of one forum. I mean, I'm I'm thinking in terms of 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 drumbeat. Um, yeah, you know, uh, and and that's why in some respects, I like the idea of tying it to our meetings. Um, you know, because we can do, you know, whether it's March sixteenth or whatever the first Tuesday is in April, you know, have an additional forum and we can talk. A- again, now and it's it's not just to have the forums. I'm really kind of curious. Again, anecdotally, there's, there seems to be a very strong appetite for doing something in the downtown district that gets something done. That has the potential for really improving the downtown, making it a more vibrant place. Um, uh, you know, more, more, more everything, more walkable, more vibrant, more, you know, receptive to businesses, more receptive to to potentially, you know, alternative type housings than than, you know, uh, half acre, full acre lots and things like that. That's anecdotally. Now, now maybe we'll do this and and we'll find out that, jeez, we're wrong about this. I don't think so. I hope not. Um, but by the same token, we also might find that that the sentiment for that is even stronger than we think. So you know, uh, let's open the doors, let's hear from people as 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 many and as often as we can. That's my view.
No, I agree, Marty.
And I think it's also going to be important to pay attention to the public hearings that planning has and just, you know, get a sense of comments that you know, either Planning Board themselves raise or that others raise to the Planning Board at those public meetings also. Be able to address those head on.
Yep.
Marty?
Yep.
Maybe we could build, uh, publicity or conversation around downtown into some of the selectmen's office hours. Do some specific outreach to say, oh, office hour topic conversation, if you have thoughts about downtown.
Good idea.
Yeah.
That's a very good idea. And the other thing that I, again, that I'm, the reason I added in with related Main Street issues. Um, I had one very brief conversation with the CSX guy, which basically laid the groundwork for future conversations with the CSX guy. Um, and I I I don't want to, I don't want to get in too much into the substance of what I want to talk to him about, although it's it's more to find, to to really flesh out exactly where CSX is. Um, um, because I honestly, I've I've listened, I've read their letters, I've listened to the the, um, uh, you know, communications about what 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 they are saying they want and if they don't get it, what their position is going to be. Honestly, I still don't have a clear sense of exactly what their position is. Um, and so, I, you know, I ask questions for a living. I'm going to ask them questions. So. Maybe maybe by, maybe by the sixteenth.
Um, if I can just add something to the downtown conversation, um, Shopsey met last Thursday morning and, um, had a conversation about the affordable piece that we revised a few times, um, during the consensus, meaning I know we had, um, an extensive conversation about it. So I explained kind of where we started, what was changed, the conversation that ensued, and then where we ended up. And, um, I just, I just want to bring it back to this board that um, there's concerns that eight, to hit eight units to get any affordable is concerning to Shopsey. Um, and I I agree with that sentiment. Um, and I think where where the consensus meeting ended up, though, was um, with Judy's guidance, you either use eight as your threshold or you're going to get no, um, diversity in housing. So I I felt like that was a, um, a point that we had to, we had to, we had to choose a path and, um, you know, Dorian and I were the ones that were representing Shopsey at that meeting, but I just wanted to bring that back to this board so that you were aware that there there are concerned, um, members of that board related to affordable, so that, um, we are, I believe we're meeting uh, the morning of the sixteenth, um, on this specific issue before the Planning Board hearing. So, um, you may hear that, um, Shopsey is, um, concerned about that.
Yeah, it'd be good for them to to to, I mean, that that wasn't us. That was a very compelling point that was made by somebody who, again, knows zoning. And and it was, it was a perfect example of of, again, the perfect potentially being the enemy of the good. And, you know, it may, it may look great on paper, but the practical effect from somebody who knows zoning is going to be that it's not going to work.
Right.
Um, I I'd add that, uh, the Planning Board actually discussed this at their recent meeting. Uh, Jesse Stein had previously said, uh, because of the lack of affordable housing there, he could not support this. They had some discussion around this topic, just as Chelsea suggested, in terms of adding some context. And I think he's now on the fence on it. I don't want to speak for him, but I think that's something we're going to have to deal with with the Planning Board as well to get his support, but I think that that Chelsea is exactly right. We didn't do that in the vacuum and, uh, there's some good reasons for who came out there.
All right. Well, we got our work cut out for us, but that's fine. All right, and we all set with Main Street, uh, downtown district zoning, et cetera?
Sorry, I just want to clarify, this is Julie. Um, is the EDC authorized to send out those, um, those residential packets to butters and people in town?
As far as I've heard, yes.
Yeah, the board had, Julie, is is, they had, um, prayer given me authorization to sign off on that. And yep.
Okay, great. We will do that. And I think we just wanted to, you know, also make sure that, um, so just to be clear, the date is going to be on the sixteenth and we're going to start it at seven thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
How to publicize, we need to do that in a coordinated way here somehow, so.
Yeah, and Julie will touch base. Um, I don't know what your schedule is this week. I'm fairly fairly flexible, other than, um, um, tomorrow, actually, I have a, um, a couple of things, but other than that, the rest of the week I'm open. So if you want to shoot me some times?
Sure thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Julie, you're the only one left. Do you have any public comment?
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, I think we are done.
Motion to adjourn.
By Mr. Shea, seconded by?
Bam, second.
Mr. Stivers, Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. Thanks for hanging in, everybody.
Good night, everybody.